We're going to bring our council meeting for today, Tuesday, May 6th, to order. Let the record reflect that council members Adams, Boyd, Segarra, Solomon, Alvarez are If you would, please stand and join me with the invocation.
You'll join us in our Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Alvarez.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We get a motion, a second, and a vote to consider the agenda. Councilmember Solomon?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Alvarez?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Solomon and a second by Councilmember Alvarez. All in favor, please vote yes. Any opposed, vote no. Madam Secretary, it looks like we have five in support of approval of our agenda.
Yes, ma'am. I'm recording at five to zero.
Five to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Please let the record reflect that Councilmember Cobb is present. And we're going to move on to our work sessions, three minutes, three times each. We're going to discuss our agenda items, one through eighteen, for the May 6th regular session. There is no final action until the regular session. Madam Secretary.
RS 25064, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing an agreement with QR Quick Roofing for the Special Events Center roof repair in the amount of $333,782.32.
I have my presentation in front of me while they work some things out, and if you are okay with that, I'll just read from here. Okay, thank you. The Special Events Center was remodeled in 2001 at a time, at the time a new roof was installed. The current roof is 24 years old and it has exceeded its expected lifespan. The roof has multiple leaks which pose a safety hazard during events and potentially damage the facility further. Addressing this issue is critical to maintaining a safe and functional space for the Colleen Civic and Conference Center, K3C, thank you, and protecting the city's asset. Staff obtained two quotes from the vendor through the TIPS Cooperative Purchasing Program. They were very close with the numbers. QR Quick Roofing, $333,782.32. The Roof Company in Waco, $334,937.99. Due to the price difference, K3C staff decided to move forward with QR Quick Roofing. The QR Quick Roofing conforms to city policy based on their TIPS contracts. The purchase will utilize TIPS Cooperative Contract Number 241001. Purchases made through a cooperative contract are exempt from competitive bidding as stated in TLGC Section 271.102. Funding will be included in the fiscal year 25-year and budget amended to appropriate excess fund balance in the hot fund. The scope of work is outlined in front of you. Mechanically attached HD board to existing metal, mechanically attached standard gray color 60-mill thermoplastic polyoleum per manufacturer specs, flash and seal all penetrations, install a cleated drip edge, SkyTrak rental is for three weeks, and there's a 20-year no-dollar limit warranty on the repair. This is an illustration of the style of the roof. Staff recommends that City Council approve the contract and authorize the city manager or his designee to enter into an agreement with QR Quick Roofing for the Special Events Center roof repair in the amount of $333,782.32.
Thank you, Ms. McNair. We do not have any questions at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 25065, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with the Texas Department of Public Safety and the Texas Department of Transportation concerning the installation and operation of an automatic license plate reader system.
Welcome, Chief Lopez. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, city manager, assistant city manager, I'm sorry, in the future. Before I begin this presentation, I'd like to address some privacy concerns about the installation of these Flock cameras. As part of our efforts to enhance public safety while respecting individual rights, the Colleen Police Department has carefully implemented the Flock Safety Camera System. This initiative funded through a $400,000 catalytic converter grant awarded by the Texas Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority with $100,000 matching funds from the city aims to deter crime, recover stolen vehicles, and protect our community. We want to assure the council and the community that safeguarding privacy is a top priority. Flock cameras are vehicle focuses, focus, capturing license plates and vehicle features, not people. No facial recognition technology is involved. Data is securely stored for a limited retention period and deleted unless necessary for ongoing investigations. Access to data is restricted to authorized personnel for legitimate law enforcement purposes only. Every query of the system is logged and subject to an audit. We have executed agreements with the Texas Department of Public Safety and the Texas Department of Transportation, ensuring compliance with data protection and system access requirements. The Colleen Police Department has adopted comprehensive internal policies to align with best practices and legal standards. Through transparency, accountability, and strict privacy protection, we are committed to use the technology in a way that strengthens, not erodes, public trust. Now continue with the presentation. On January 7th, 2025, City Colleen, City Council approved the SB 224 Catalytic Converter Grant application through the Texas Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority. On January 23rd, 2025, Colleen was awarded $400,000. On March 4th, 2025, Council approved the purchase of a Flock Safety Camera System using the grant and $100,000 in city matching funds. The Colleen Police Department has entered the implementation phase of the Flock Camera Project. Permitting and installation of the cameras are currently underway. Once operational, the system will provide a direct connection to the Texas Crime Information Center, TCIC, database. Prior to establishing the connection, the city of Colleen must enter into a MOU with the Texas Department of Public Safety to access the stolen license plate and stolen vehicle database. Additionally, the city must execute a license plate reader agreement. These agreements govern database access and outline requirements related to system access, data retention, and information security. The city of Colleen must also execute a MOU with the Texas Department of Transportation. This agreement will authorize the city and its vendors to access designated areas within TechSoc's right-of-way for the installation and maintenance of certain cameras. I want to clarify also that these cameras are placed on public property, not on private property. The Colleen Police Department has adopted policies to ensure compliance with the requirements outlined in all three agreements. These agreements are essential for the installation and operation of the camera system. There's no additional cost to the city associated with executing or maintaining these agreements. City staff recommends that the city manager or his designee be authorized to execute the memorandum of understanding regarding stolen vehicles and license plates and the license plate reader user agreement with the Texas Department of Public Safety as well as the multi-use agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation as presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Chief Kavinsky, oh, I'm sorry, Chief Lopez, we do have one question. Councilmember Adams?
Thanks, Mayor Protem. One question, Citizen Acts. We mentioned, you answered one of the questions of Citizen Acts, but, and I think you may have addressed this already, which, the cameras are only pointing in towards public space. They're not targeting a, well, unless proper thing is done, but you're only, they're only standing to look in the use of public space.
The cameras are placed on public property, and once you place them on public property, they can face any direction out in the open.
Gotcha.
So there's no expectation of privacy. And, and I want to state too also that on, on Thursday, May 8th, we're going to be holding a town hall from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at, I think it's Second Baptist, the church right across the street from the convention center, and we're going to be discussing this item during that town hall. So if any citizens want to know more information, please feel free to come to our town hall meeting this Thursday.
Thank you, Chair.
Seeing no other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Chief, we've got Councilmember Solomon, please.
Yes, Chief, when you say public property, what locations they'll be at, and what type of property, could you give us samples?
They mostly place on the right-of-way traffic poles, electricity poles, things that are accessible to the, to the public through TechSoc or Texas DPS.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And one other question, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Once there's a final approval, if everything goes through, how long will it take for the setup and implementation of these systems?
Approximately 60 days.
60 days.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary.
RS 25066, consider a memorandum resolution approving the Fire Station 9 Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning System retrofit through Brand Companies LLC in the amount of $773,500.
Welcome, Chief Kavinsky. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, City Council, Assistant City Manager. Due to ventilation and humidity issues, the Colleen Fire Department requested engineering services for a study and design of modifications to the HVAC system at Fire Station 9. The intent was to deliver an HVAC system design that will improve the ventilation and air quality of the fire station to meet City of Colleen codes and standards. Brand Companies LLC, a mechanical, electrical, and plumbing company on buyboard contract 733-24, was contacted for the proposal. They provided two options, which included a complete replacement or a retrofit of the existing system with standalone controls. The Fire Department and Building Services agree that a retrofit of the existing system with the standalone controls for a total of $773,500 hours was the best option. The alternatives were to have a complete replacement of the Fire Station 9 HVAC system, which was significantly more cost, and it would remove the firefighters from the station for up to three months, which would result in additional costs of finding alternative housing to be able to continue our response to the Station 9 district and surrounding areas, or to the retrofit of Fire Station 9 HVAC system with the standalone controls. The financial impact of $773,500 is what was provided in the quote, and if City Council approves this expenditure, governmental CIP fund balance will need to be appropriated on the year-end budget amendment. This does conform to city policy, Brand Companies LLC through their buyboard cooperative contract, 733-24, in the amount that was stated previously. Staff recommends to authorize the city manager or his designee to approve the proposal to retrofit the Station 9 HVAC provided by Brand Companies LLC through their buyboard cooperative contract in the amount of $773,500 for fiscal year 2025, and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute any and all change orders within the amount set by state and local law. And I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
My question is actually more for the Assistant City Manager of Finance. We don't, do we have the money currently, as, so you mentioned, Chief mentioned that it's going to be, has to be set out on, but we don't, we don't know what the projected fund balance to pay for that is yet, or do we?
At this point, we have pretty good estimates.
Okay, so do we need to, is, if we, if this is approved, are we saying yes automatically, or we, this is going to come back to us for a vote?
Judith, if you want to touch on this one, I believe we did a mid-year budget amendment here pretty recently.
Thank you, Ms. Tenglin.
Yes, good afternoon. The excess fund balance we're talking about is fiscal year 2024 excess fund balance that haven't been allocated yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that conclude your question, sir?
Yeah, we, but it's, we're approving a budget amendment now. Will we vote for this, or?
It would be at the end of the year, is that correct, Judith?
Got it.
At the end of this fiscal year, yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Segarra?
Thank you. Chief, here's a silly question. I know we switched numbers around. Which one is Fire Station number nine?
Fire Station 9 is the fire station on Bunny Trail Road.
Bunny Trail, that's the last one, the most recent one we built, right?
That is correct. Station is nine years old.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Seeing no additional questions, thank you, Chief. Madam Secretary.
RS 25067, consider a memorandum resolution approving the installation of audiovisual equipment for the Emergency Operations Center in the amount of $895,350.
Thank you, Mr. Resto.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Council. This is the city manager. The item before us tonight is the approval of the audiovisual equipment for the Emergency Operations Center slash Fire Station 4 Training Rooms in amount of $895,350. This item is budgeted in the IT Capital Improvement Program. And, there we go. So in December 2024, the Information Technology Department published a request for proposals to provide EOC audiovisual equipment and received four responses. I'll go over those in a minute. The evaluation team consisted of staff from finance, information technology, emergency operations, and the Fire Department, and we evaluated the four proposals. Of these four proposals, GTS Uplink was selected as the vendor that had the best qualifications and fully met the city operational technological and fiscal requirements. These were the bids that we received from the four folks, and you'll see it ranged from 1.2 million to 895,000. We picked GTS Uplink because they were a turnkey solution that included everything that we were asking for. The CTI, or conference technology, did not have cable runs and some other important pieces that the city would have been responsible for, so additional costs, so we wanted a full turnkey solution, which is what the committee selected. The new Emergency Operations Center audiovisual system will have the ability to display information across seamless video walls consisting of multi-view commercial-grade displays, displays and integration to the training in the conference rooms, integrate with the Real-Time Crime Center. Conference rooms will be using webcam, ceiling-mounted speakers, and array of microphones, the wireless presentation gateway to facilitate bring-your-own-device and screen sharing. So staff recommends that the city manager or designee be authorized to execute a professional services agreement with GTS Uplink for the installation of the audiovisual equipment for the new EOC in amount of 895,350 using DIR Contract COP 4754, and authorize the city manager or designee to expressly authorize and execute any and all change orders within the amount set by local law. And I want to give a couple other information before I ask questions that I believe you may want. It estimated for the installation of this is a four-week installation with potential of five to six weeks lead time for the video wall and the other equipment. And I'm available for any questions, I believe Sarah is here? Is Sarah here? Okay. The chief is here as well to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you. Councilmember Segarra?
All right, I'm just going to continue asking silly questions here, but what number is the newest fire station?
Fire Station 4.
Four, so I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that, so newest is four. Nine, instead of going in order, we're kind of jumping all over the place.
I'll let the chief address that.
So... Just, just to provide that clarification, so Station 4 was at Skylark Field, had been shut down a number of years ago, and as the previous administrations decided to build new fire stations, they never renamed Fire Station 4. And so, in an effort to remain consistent and be able to answer questions, now we know we can say we have nine fire stations, as opposed to saying eight stations when someone says, "Well, how come you have a Fire Station 9?" So we just decided to resurrect the Station 4 from the Phoenix and put that down on Tremere Road.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Seeing no additional questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 25068, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a letter of agreement with Pump Solutions Incorporated for removal and installation of three split-case pumps at Pump Station number five in the amount of $135,000.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, Protem, Council, Assistant City Manager. As stated, this is the replacement of pumps, our three pumps at Pump Station 5. A little background, pumps have a life cycle of 10 to 20 years. They are made of many parts and are critical to the water and wastewater infrastructure system to move fluids from one location to the next. Staff went out for a multi-year bid for pump replacement within two pump stations and 12 lift stations, and have exceeded, have 12, they all have exceeded their life cycle. On February 6th, 2025, purchasing received one response for bid number 25-16 multi-pump replacement. On March 18th, we came to council, and council approved the rejection of that bid because of inconsistencies within the bid. On March 14th of this year, Water and Sewer received a quote for replacement and installation of three split-case pumps for Pump Station 5, which is one of the pumps that was identified in the original bid, from Pump Solutions, Inc., through their interlocal purchasing system, also known as TIPS, in the amount of $135,000. TIPS contract numbers located on this slide as well. This is just a picture showing what the pump is that we're going to be replacing, this whole big round blue apparatus that you see here is the pump. It's called a split-case pump because of the, if you see the derivative piece right there, split, split the pump, you can open the pump from the side to do work on the pump without actually removing the pump, so it kind of makes it a split-case pump for us. There are propellers inside of that that makes the water move from one location to the other. The staff recommendation that City Council authorize the city manager or designee to execute a letter of agreement with Pump Solutions, Inc., through TIPS Contract 23010401 in the amount of $135,000, and furthermore authorize the city manager or designee to execute any and all change orders within the amount set by state and local law, and I am here to answer any questions that you may have about this item.
Thank you, sir. Seeing none, we appreciate you, Mr. Reynolds. I think you have the next item as well.
Yes, ma'am.
RS 25069, consider a memorandum resolution rejecting all bids received for bid number 2520, control valve replacement project at three pump stations and three elevated storage tanks.
Yes. We received a bid for the control valve replacement, and again, we had a, because we asked for a multi-year, it's kind of hard to get a multi-year bid right now with people not want to give a multi-year bid, knowing that the prices go up and down, they don't want to be locked into it. So a little background, Clay Valve, which is a brand of a valve that we have in our pump and lift stations, are designed to automatically adjust and maintain desired conditions in the water system. The valves, these valves can be, improve, help improve system efficiency, reduce costs, and minimize downtime. Clay Valve, control valves can be repaired to extend their usability and have a life expectancy of 10 to 15 years. The existing valves are nearing, or have exceeded their life, expected lifespan, and replacement is necessary to maintain our system reliability. A lot of these that have exceeded their life expectancy is due to the phenomenal staff that we have in Water and Sewer that go out and repair these things throughout the year to make sure they continue to work past their life expectancy. On February 19th of 2025, purchasing received one response for bid number 20, that's 20, 25, that's 20, control valve replacement. It came from Clean Infusions for $565,795. In review of this, it's not moving. In review, in review of this, this bid, it was found to be inconsistent for many reasons. This is a picture of the, of the Clay Valve itself, this, this big blue apparatus here. This is what allows us to control the pressure in the water system as it comes through the pump, so you don't overpressurize the system, and it controls the water that goes in and out of the system. Okay, when we reviewed, responded, revealed that it was inconsistent in the pricing between locations despite identical valve sizes and similar replacement requirements. The cost discrepancies between stations raises concerns about bid accuracy, price, pricing methodology, and their overall project cost justification. General instructions and preparations of the bid conditions within the bid documents allow the city to reject any and all bids. With that being said, the recommendation that City Council reject the single response to bid number 25-20, control valve replacement, and that the city go out to bid at a later date or utilize a cooperative for procurement processes.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Madam Secretary.
RS 25070, consider a memorandum resolution approving the build-to-suite lease agreement with CSI Aviation Incorporated.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Council. This item's approval for a build-to-suit lease for CSI Aviation. Just a little bit of background, CSI Aviation's been a tenant of the Colleen Regional Airport since 2018. They currently lease two corporate aircraft hangars at the airport. Over the past three years, they've gradually moved various elements of their company from Albuquerque, New Mexico to the airport. They currently have 64 full-time employees working onsite at the airport, with several other employees assigned to Colleen but either working remotely or splitting their time between Colleen and their Albuquerque office. And these jobs are pilots, mechanics, flight nurses, flight paramedics, mission planners, operations specialists, and these type, and a lot of these folks are local, local folks. A lot of them are soldiers that are coming right off of Fort Cabasus that's separating for the service, and because there's good-paying jobs here, they've decided to stay in our community. The Aviation Staff's been negotiating with CSI concerning relocating their corporate headquarters from Albuquerque, New Mexico to the City of Colleen, contingent upon the construction and availability of adequate office space near the airport. CSI anticipates that the relocation will permit the creation of at least 35 full-time additional positions with an average salary of approximately $95,000 within two years from occupying the new building. Now, these type of jobs would be their executive management team, which would be their chief executive officer, their president, chief operating officer, senior vice presidents, et cetera, as well as administrative staff like executive assistants, secretaries, medical billing specialists, accounts, payable accounts receivable, their legal staff, and marketing. You know, one of the things that's brought up in this council chambers quite a bit is the need to bring high-paying, quality, high-paying jobs to the City of Colleen. CSI Aviation's been doing that for the last seven years, and this project would, would continue to do that. Based on discussions with CSI Aviation Department, the Aviation Department developed an RFQ for the design and construction services for a designed-build project at the airport. The RFQ was advertised on October 13th, '24, closed on November 13th. The RFQ was advertised on October thirteenth, twenty-four, closed on November seventh, twenty-four. Synergy Commercial Construction was selected to begin the discussions for a design-build project for an office building at the airport. Synergy Commercial Construction had several meetings with CSI and aviation staff to determine the design requirements of the building and the various site requirements. Several conceptual plans were presented and discussed with CSI and the aviation staff. Based on these meetings and discussions, Synergy developed and proposed the price of the building for five million one hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty cents. And based on Synergy's proposal, staff then negotiated a lease agreement with CSI Aviation to lease a build-to-suit nine-thousand-square-foot office building located on a city-owned three-acre track at the Clean Regional Airport. The terms of the lease are for additional one hundred and twenty months and shall automatically remove, renew for an additional one hundred and twenty months. Beginning on the commencement date, June first, twenty twenty-six, the minimum guarantee rate, rent rate will be twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars a month. Beginning on the first anniversary and every anniversary for the duration of the initial term, the amount will increase by three percent. Revenues will be deposited in the Clean Forded Regional Enterprise Fund, beginning in twenty twenty-six. The recommendation is for the city council to approve the build-to-suit lease agreement with CSI Aviation and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Additionally, authorize the city manager to execute all addendums and lease actions to the agreement, pleading termination to the extent allowed by the city charter and the laws of the state of Texas. And be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We're going to start with Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem. Excuse me, bear with my voice, celebrating the results of the election, so all that good stuff. No, it does look like I landed back on my feet, back in the seat today, here to complete my full term, not being removed from office. But to get to the point, over the past seven years, CSI Aviation has shown a strong commitment to Clean, having leased two large hangars, and determined to move its headquarters to the Clean Regional Airport. This is a major win for economic development and is likely to spur growth, continued growth along the Clear Creek Corridor in West Clean. I personally believe this corporation is going to prove to be a big player in the industry and in our community as well. In reviewing the lease, I noted a ten-year term, excuse me, at two dollars and fifty cents per square foot annual with three percent escalations year over year. And CSI should know they're getting a great deal for a brand-new facility located on the airport property. And the city should know we're getting a great tenant and a great partner as well. I did want to point out that the airport being located on the literal corner of the city is, is continuing to grow. We have a Shell fuel station across the street, and there's a lot of opportunity over there. So I just want to implore the council in the future to continue to support growth, which is much needed close to our airport. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Segarra.
Mr. Wilson, I'll be much shorter. I just wanted to say thank you and your team for doing such a great job. And as you mentioned, this is something that, as a city, we always ask for, you know, better-paying jobs. And it's just amazing that you pretty much got the whole headquarters moving here, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, and that, that took some time, but that is tremendous effort in your part to get that, so.
It was a team effort. We, CSI has been here for seven years. For about the last three years, the owner of CSI, his team, and my team have been working together to make this happen. We've ran into several roadblocks, but we just keep on trying to figure out another way to make it happen. And three years later, here we are. But yes, it's a great partnership. And not only is it a benefit for the city of Clean for the jobs that it creates, but it's also for the airport itself. The more activity, the fuel cells that it will generate will increase our revenue, but also it provides aviation services for the community, like the medical services. And something a lot of people don't think about, they've got, I think, eight or nine mechanics working out of those two hangars, and they have a contract with American Airlines. And there's been multiple instances in the last two years to where a flight that would have been canceled in the past or drastically delayed was only delayed thirty minutes or forty-five minutes because we had folks right next door that could hop on a tug and come over and change a light bulb or do a minor repair and get that bird back in the air. So it's a benefit to the, to, you know, the airport as well as the community.
Yeah, and I was going to mention that because I knew about the maintenance too, and it'll go a long way also to trying to attract maybe another airline to the airport too.
That is one of the, that is one of the things, several of the airlines that we're working with, that's been discussed and brought up as well.
Yeah. So thank you again and your team for doing such awesome, great work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Cobb.
Well, Mr. Wilson, you know, I'm very, I get excited really quickly. And when I saw the medical service that, that CSI services will bring and that plane, I was ready to come out of retirement to see how we could do all of this together.
Well, I think they'd be hiring for a flight nurse if you're ready.
Well, you know what? I think I'll make a good flight nurse. But what I think most importantly, that for the city of Clean, it means a lot.
Yes, ma'am.
It means a lot to have the services, to have the job, but most importantly, to know that we now have a plane that can take those persons who need to be rushed from our many hospitals to safety. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. We're seeing no additional questions, Mr. Wilson, but I believe you have the next couple of items.
The next two items are companion items to this one.
Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-five zero seven one. Consider a memorandum resolution approving a design-build agreement with Synergy Commercial Construction for the design-build of a new office complex at Clean Regional Airport in the amount of five million one hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty cents.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
All right, these next slides are going to be similar to what we just read. Aviation staff's been negotiating with CSI concerning relocating their corporate headquarters from New Mexico to Clean. CSI anticipates the relocation will create about thirty-five full-time jobs with an average salary of ninety-five thousand dollars. Based on these discussions with CSI, the aviation department developed an RFQ for the design and construction services for a design-build project at the airport. The RFQ advertised on October thirteenth, twenty-four, closed on November seventh, twenty-four. Synergy Commercial Construction was selected to begin the discussions for a design-build project for an office building at the Clean Regional Airport. Synergy Commercial Construction had several meetings with CSI Aviation and aviation staff to determine the design requirements of the building and the various site requirements. Several conceptual plans were presented and discussed with CSI and aviation staff. Based on these meetings and discussions, Synergy developed a proposed price for the building in the amount of five million one hundred and eighty-four dollars eight hundred and thirty-three and thirty cents. Based on Synergy's proposal, staff negotiated a lease agreement with CSI Aviation to lease a build-to-suit nine-thousand-square-foot office building located on a city-owned three-acre site at the airport. The term of the lease is a period for ten years and shall automatically renew for an additional ten years. The expenditure will be funded through a combination of sources, including a million dollars from the fund balance of the governmental CIP fund, six hundred and eighty-four thousand eight thirty-four, from the fund balance of the Water and Sewer CIP fund, and three-point five million that will be provided either through the issues that, or be provided through the issuance of debts such as revenue bonds. Upon the approval of this resolution, expenditures will be appropriated in the FY twenty-five year-end budget amendment. Staff recommends that city council approve a build-design agreement with Synergy Commercial Construction in the amount of five million one hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty cents for the design-build of a new office complex at the Clean Regional Airport and authorize the city manager or his designated to execute all contract documents and change orders or actions within the amounts set by state and local law. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing no questions, Mr. Wilson. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-five zero seven two. Consider a memorandum resolution approving a professional services agreement with Garver LLC for owner representative services for a design-build project at Clean Regional Airport in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Again, a little background, this, again, a companion item to the two we've just been talking about. CSI Aviation has signed a lease agreement with city Clean contingent upon city council approval to lease a nine-thousand-square-foot build-to-suit office building at the Clean Regional Airport for the relocation of their corporate headquarters. When use, Synergy Commercial Construction was selected through an RFQ to be the design-build contractor for this project. When using the design-build method of construction, state law requires municipalities to engage an independent engineer consultant to act as the owner's representative for construction administration and construction oversight. To that end, staff negotiated a professional service agreement with Garver LLC in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to provide project administration, owner representative services for the design-build project at the Clean Regional Airport. Garver was selected as our general engineer consultant of choice via the RFQ process. Staff recommends that the city council approve a professional service agreement with Garver LLC in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and recommends that the city council authorize the city manager or his designated to execute all contract documents and change orders or actions within the amount set by state and local law. And again, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none at this time, Mr. Wilson. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-five zero seven three. Consider a memorandum resolution approving an agreement with First National Bank, Texas, awarding naming rights for the Family Recreation Center.
Welcome, Mr. Murphy.
Good afternoon, Matt Pro Tem, distinguished members of the council. I come before you presenting RS twenty-five dash oh seven three. On January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, the city council awarded RF twenty-five dash oh three consultant for city park facility sponsorship agreements to Sportsman Solutions. The scope of services included evaluating the city's facilities to determine the naming rights and documenting methodology used for these assessments. A flat commission pricing structure applied to all service phases with twenty percent of the gross commissions allocated to Sportsman Solutions and eighty percent to the city. All agreements proposed by Sportsman Solutions would be submitted to council for consideration. The proposed agreement entails a commitment of sixty thousand per year for seven years with an option for two additional seven-year terms. The city will retain forty-eight thousand annually with a potential for one million eight thousand after the commission to Sportsman Solutions is paid. Additionally, the estimated cost for signage is forty thousand, which will be shared equally between the city and First National Bank of Texas, resulting in a cost of twenty thousand dollars for the city. These are some slides of what a proposed mock-up of what the signage would look like on the building. Staff's recommendation to city councils to approve the agreement granting naming rights to First National Bank of Texas for an additional term of seven years with optional for two additional seven-year terms. And I'm available for any questions.
We have a couple on this one, sir. Let's start with Councilmember Adams.
Okay, I'm, can you go back a couple of slides? In the agreement with Sportsman Solutions, I just, what costs are they assuming in this?
They're doing all the initial prep work costs. Their payment comes out once the overall agreement has been signed, and they're receiving twenty percent of the overall commissions from it.
Based on them doing the prep work?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the next one, then go back, go forward one slide. And then the, for the signage, and so, and our split with the bank. Go, so the split with the bank is still, it's twenty-four, twenty-eighty also?
No, sir.
That's what I wanted to, quick math, I'm sorry.
The bank would submit a payment of sixty thousand dollars a year, of which twenty percent would go to Sportsman Solutions, and eighty percent would come to us. That roughly gives us about forty-eight thousand annually to a total of, what they did for the twenty-one-year timeframe that's specified, roughly one million eight, eight thousand dollars.
And Sportsman Solutions making off a bit. Okay, I'll let somebody else ask a question, they come back. Thanks.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Pro, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem. This was an initiative of mine that cropped up during a parks meeting with staff to establish additional parks funding. The Assistant City Manager did a great job in working to find a firm that could assist the council, and we subsequently approved the agreement. But to get to the point, before I go into my comments, I need to make it unequivocally clear that what I'm going to state does not bear no relation to the sponsor herein named as First National Bank, Texas. Again, my comments bear no relation to the bank name or brand. In fact, the bank is an excellent bank, strong brand, excellent leadership, excellent customer service, which has been my experience. So at a cursory glance, the naming rights initiative is attractive, but my specific concern are the protracted, the protracted marketing opportunities made available at a frequently-used taxpayer-funded facility for what appears to be a nominal fee. Now, I'm in all support of this, but when I looked into this document, it had me really questioning whether or not we're really getting a bang for the buck. So outside of just the signage, you have, the sponsor will receive two exterior signs to the Family Recreation Center. Sponsor will receive one poll sign inside the lobby. Sponsor will receive one welcome sign inside the lobby. Sponsor will receive one piece of marketing material in the men's locker room. Sponsor will receive seven outfield banner signs. Sponsor will get recognition on owner's home website. Sponsor will receive recognition on official complex, social media, onsite promotional exposure, displays, service demonstrations, premium distribution, giveaways, rotating ad. That is quite a bit, in my opinion, for that amount. I'm not sure the investment is large enough at sixty thousand dollars, which would be split with the city. And as a large business owner, if I was a large business owner, let me correct that, I would be, I would be prepared to pay almost double that amount for such incredible level of exposure. I would argue the signage presence alone could garner the sixty thousand as an image, the image nearly suggests the sponsor is the owner of the building, which also makes great for corporate responsibility. In consideration of the already-established agreement with the herein named sponsor being a legacy member of the community, I'm not recommending a scaling back of, or increasing the fee, but for all subsequent applicants, I would say the council should really consider the details of naming rights for, for our city facilities, considering their general purpose, their location, as well as the simply, the simple fact that they remain taxpayer-funded. So all in all, this is a great initiative, but we may get a ton of people wanting to sponsor things across the city and it just turns into ads and marketing everywhere. And I think if we kind of raise that bar, we may be, be able to get a little bit more bang for the buck. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you. And I was going to say, I kind of agree with that, but with that said, I think that we made a commitment, we signed an agreement, but I think that in the long run, it, it kind of, it's the base for what we're doing. I think that we didn't know how to do this. It was a great idea. I mean, we're getting money that we never thought we can, could get, but I think that hopefully this will create like a domino effect and maybe attract more and more people to do that, because there's only so many people that can afford to do this in our community. But I think the more we get a better grasp at this on how to do it, I think what, what Mr., what Councilman Boyd is saying is true. I think we need to go up a little bit more on the price, especially for what we're, we're given. But being that this is a local business here that's been around for many years and stuff like, I think they're well-deserving of what they got, and I'm good with the agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Segarra. Councilmember Solomon.
Yo, I wanted to know, I'm looking at the graphics, I know this is a Photoshop. Is, would this kind of be how it would look?
No, sir. Right now, the exact template, that was just a rough sketch to give you an idea of what would go on the building, but the exact naming would be, hasn't been agreed upon as of yet. And you all would have the right to approve that naming agreement before it would go forward.
Good.
They did specify a certain amount of visibility, so the size of it and the dimensions, we could forward it to you, because we do have a rough estimate from one sign provider. But the actual verbiage has not been agreed upon.
Okay, so because I'm thinking we still wanted to, that recreation center to be, we don't want it to look like a bank. You know, it's so large that it looks like a, you know, a huge bank. I mean, that's what I'm thinking.
Yes, sir.
You know, it should indicate family center, recreation center, or maybe with the same size. So that's down the road, but I'm just, thank you for letting me know it's not going to look like the First National Bank.
No, sir.
And if I could, we can absolutely make adjustments to that signage. We can increase the size of the Family Recreation Center text, if that's council's desire. We, we're not at the point where we have a final design. That's very close to what it could look like, and it would be backlit, but we absolutely have some room to negotiate there.
Thank you.
And if council would like for Sportsman Solutions to, to come out and present kind of their methodology for how they get to some of these numbers, they do this all over the country. country, they're well-versed in this process, they do all the legwork upfront, the staff doesn't have to do this, they bring us those contracts, and they don't get paid until we get a check. So if council wants some additional background information on how they get to some of these numbers, happy to have them come out and do that presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And Ms. Wilson, I think that's a great idea. My concern was, I know longtime Colleenite and former NFL player Tommy Harris contributed money towards that facility, and for a long time, it's been referred to as the Tommy Harris Gym, so would that affect that in any way?
No, sir. And just to go back to a point that Councilman Boyd raised, I think that the convolutes of what the overall sponsorships could entail were listed in the description that you had. In this particular agreement, they would have naming rights on the building, they would have a banner in the building, and a blurb on a receipt that's printed from the FRC itself that acknowledges them as a sponsor, naming rights sponsor of that building. Now, we do have, are in negotiations with other potential sponsors that have different naming rights, most notably one for our athletic facilities that would have signage at the fields and banners and things of that nature. So I think what you got was the overview of what all of our sponsorship packets could entail, but each one would be specifically detailed out for the resounding sponsor or potential sponsor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. I think naming rights are important for municipalities, you know, they do provide non-traditional revenue source and offer a stream of community recognition. So my recommendation, if we can just take note of that possibly, is also to make sure that it says somewhere on their community sponsor in the signage when we get to that point. It looks like we have something else from Councilmember Adams as well.
Thanks, and thank you, Assistant City Manager. That'll actually help out with the earlier questions I had. Don't we have a naming policy for buildings that we voted on? Does this not have to go through that as well, or this is a bypass to that?
The naming policy contemplates, if I can. The naming policy contemplates three different types of things: city-initiated, petition, citizen petition, and then sponsor agreement. So this is a separate track through that policy.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Segarra.
Just to follow up, I think what we should have done, and I don't know if that's too late or not, we should have put like a minimum and said, you know, at least this amount. Because when you really look at it, I mean, again, I think that our first sponsor is a great sponsor to have, and I think it's great that they did it, but if you look at $60,000 a year, that's $5,000 a month. And I know that there's a lot of marketing company, a lot of billboards, that that's pretty much how much they charge to do that. So I think now that we know this better, we should have said, okay, if we want somebody to sponsor this, then, you know, let's set a minimum, and that's it, take it or leave it. That way, it does benefit the city, because I think in the long run, we pretty much end up with breaking even or something, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Segarra. Councilmember Adams, this is your third and final time.
I don't get all the minutes I left over. So the money from this, is it go back to the general fund, or it goes specific to recreation stuff, or is that something we have to decide later?
This will stay directly in the recreation side.
Okay, so that will be included in the language when we do?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Very good question, thank you. Seeing no additional questions, Mr. Murphy, thank you. Yeah, I believe you have the next items. Madam Secretary.
RS 25074, consider a memorandum resolution approving a memorandum of agreement with Colleen Independent School District and the City of Colleen for shared facilities usage.
Sir.
All right. Just a little background, the Parks and Recreation Department and the Colleen Civic and Conference Center seeks to establish a memorandum of agreement with the Colleen Independent School District, got to get shared use of facilities. This agreement will allow KSID access to the KCCC, with fees waived for the rental space, which includes basic setup, tear down, as well as one event coordinator. However, fees will apply for rental equipment, catering, mixed beverage service, scissor lift services, and any additional event coordinators. Additionally, the following Parks and Recreation facilities will be available: youth baseball and softball fields, the adult softball field at Lions Club Park, Davis Fields in the Colleen Athletic Complex, Long Branch Park, and the basketball courts at the Family Recreation Center and the Rosa Hartford Community Center. The district-owned facilities that will be available to the city will be up to four middle school gymnasiums located at campuses within the city of Colleen, along with all open field areas, including designated district campuses located within the city of Colleen. Additionally, Leo Buckley Stadium and Joseph S. Sellers Stadium will be accessible through a fee which will apply for their use. This MOA enhances community access to facilities and facilitates coordinated planning and ensuring efficient usage, and ultimately strengthens the partnership between the city and the school district for long-term collaboration. The term of this agreement will be for one year. Furthermore, KSID will receive a waiver of up to $10,000 in rental fees for use of the Staff recommends that the city approve the memorandum of agreement with the Colleen Independent School District and the city for shared facility usage.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
I'm not an accountant or physics, a physicist, and I'm all for, and you know, I volunteer with KSID, I like working with our youth, and I'm all for agreements, but this seems a little unbalanced. The bond for those fields that are listed on the second or third slide, majority of them came from citizens of Colleen. And so now, we're talking about giving them full use of all of our facilities, and then we get charged for the large facilities. That's, and this puts us in a conundrum, because saying no means we don't want our youth to use our facilities, and then saying yes is, here's the farm again. I don't know, I don't, well, when a decision came, this is something that needs to be relooked realistically, because it looks like historically where we, the city of Colleen gets the short end of the stick. And that's not anti-KISD, because like I said, I love working with them. But as a steward of our resources, that's, the dollars don't make sense. Thanks.
Could you touch on that, Mr. Murphy?
Again, in my short time here, it is a starting point for a conversation. We have a lot of different community entities that are seeking access to field space, gym rentals, and it's a competing priority list. Of course, we would love to have this mythological pool of money where we could build facilities just at the whim or snap of a finger, but that's not the reality. KSID has a robust school schedule with youth athletics that they have to attend to, so this is a start. As our youth athletics program goes, we now have a foothold to be able to offer more opportunities for more youth to participate.
Yeah, and I'd see that as the point. However, my issue is, and I'm, you know, I've talked to you specific about this, my issue is the having to pay for one of those facilities. If it's not being used, why does the municipality where it exists, where the citizens that already helped build it, have to pay an additional fee to use it? That's my concern and issue with that, not the fact that we're using facility, because like I said, I think this should be a center for youth sports, be it through schools or through our outside-of-school sports program. And this is a step forward, however, that issue right there is still an issue that I'm sure a lot of constituents are going to have with that.
And if I could clarify too, that any payment that would be exchanged, it's really just to pay for staff that may have to open and close the facility, custodial staff. We're struggling to keep up with the demand for our athletic programming. Staff has done a phenomenal job advertising and getting people to participate, but we need more field space, we need more court space. This is a renewal of an agreement that we previously had with the school district, and is an enhancement on the city's side, because previously, there was not a limit to the $1 amount that could be used at our convention center.
Okay.
And so now, this does put a limit on it. This is only a one-year agreement, so we absolutely can go back and talk about additional enhancements in future years, if that's council's desire.
You made me a happier person to explain that, and I'm okay with trying something and seeing if it worked, but I want to make sure that even if we have to do another board to council meeting to discuss it again, that we understand that we're partners in this, and it's, that it doesn't even appear to our citizens that one side is going to, and it also have to appear that we are working with our school district. So that's the conundrum, even me bringing this up, that creates. Thank you, thanks, Assistant City Manager, and thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem, and I agree with some of the statements that Councilman Adams just stated, and I appreciate what you said, Mr. Murphy. You said this is a start, because it's a lot to get an agreement established with the city and the school district related to facilities, hence it's just one year, right? So and also appreciate the Assistant City Manager saying this is going to enhance the operation that we have. I just have a question for clarity. In Section 3.2 of the agreement, it states, "The district will make its best efforts to provide a gymnasium for two hours at least one day during the week, defined as Monday through Friday, and at least four to six hours at least one day during the weekend, defined as Saturday and Sunday." What type of programming can really be accomplished within two hours, one day a week?
Right now, we're looking at practice schedules, and if we're split between the four middle school facilities we have, then we're able to put at least eight teams in those places in those, that block a window during the week. More so, we're looking for places to host game activities. Usually, when our facilities are in full game mode, we have a wealth of people that crowd control becomes somewhat of an issue, and we definitely want to create a creature comfort and have more people come out to watch their loved ones play and watch the youth engage. So having access on those Saturdays gives us a bigger window for actually execution of the game events.
Sure, so you say that two hours a week, once a week, and on the weekend, those couple hours will be a benefit and enhance what we're doing.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. That's all I got, Madam Mayor Protem.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think it's great, I mean, at the end, it comes down to our kids, and they're the ones that need all these facilities, because at times, we don't have enough, and having this agreement in place, I think, will open up, you know, what we don't have already. So it's a share. My question was, I know that you mentioned that this is an agreement that was already in place, so the four middle schools, we already had that, or are we adding anything in addition that we did not have before?
This year, we really better define the hours to make sure that it could accommodate our need.
So just the hours, so everything?
In addition to the change to the convention center.
Okay, okay. And do you have an idea as to how often they need? I know that they have their big teachers' conference, I guess, in the beginning of the year, I guess, but how often are they going to, did they indicate how often they would use that?
For KCCC?
Yes.
So we utilized previous year's data to see what would be a fair number. We definitely want to make sure we can accommodate them, because this is also a taxpayer-funded facility, and so we want to make sure that that is a good partnership without kind of giving away the farm.
Yeah, yeah. No, anything, I mean, I think we got to work together, you know, KISD, the city and all that, just to make sure that, you know, all our youths and kids and everything have everything available to them, so it's good. I appreciate your work, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Segarra. Councilmember Adams.
And I'm not going to use up the remaining all of my time. And I think I talked to you, can we in the future possibly look at, as an example, when I worked recreation and the school district where I grew up, during the day, I was paid by the school district, and then when a pool opened after school was over, I was paid by the Department of Recreation. I don't know, since we got to pay for the fees, and I don't know if liability is an issue, but we can look into that, to where we take over the facility during the time that we're using it, if they don't have something scheduled. I don't know, I'm not saying, I'm not directing it now, and I do support this, but if that's going to be something we look at in the future.
We can explore options.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cobb.
Sir, Councilman Adams, you were thinking with me, who's going to be responsible for the turnover and the middle person? Who's paying? When KISD come, they bring their staff and their resource officers. When we switch it over, we go to our staff. Is there a defining middle something just going on in between this?
Not really. It's been kind of handshake and hope, but word of mouth, there's not a defined agreement as it states. Out of respect, when our hours, we have our staff that is in the facility to make sure that it's being taken care of and maintained. When we're executing our events, our staff is there, but they do have like custodial staff who will shut down and open the building, make sure we have access to facilities such as restrooms and things of that nature, so.
But do we, I know a handshake is really nice, but do we have it on paper that they're going to do this? Because if I walk, what if I was subbing and walked in, and they start telling me about the handshake? I'm not going to be very interested in that handshake. I'm going to say, hey, let me go look in the book, let me go read something, let me know what's going on, because no one's going to be able to tell me anything.
What is defined is the hours of operation.
Okay.
Schools get it during the course of the school day, we're not trying to come in during the school day. We get it traditionally during hours when our kids are at home or participating in activities, usually from six to around eight in the evening during that one day a week, and on Saturdays. So it's a very defined schedule around their own athletic schedules and availability.
Oh, then that makes sense, thank you.
And Councilman Cobb, there is a clause in the contract that does define liability, and we almost treat it like a rental, and so we're responsible if there's any damage or anything else during our use of the facility, but the liability ultimately ends up with the property owner.
Okay, we're the property owner. Will they pay some of the liability insurance and take some of this liability if their staff is watching these students and their police resource persons are there?
That's not currently how it's listed, because we're also not paying theirs.
Okay, good answer.
To touch on that for a point of clarity, so are they going to be required to have their own personal insurance as any other rental facility?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. All right, Mr. Murphy, seeing no additional questions, sir. Do you have another, let's see here, one more. Madam Secretary.
RS 25075, consider a memorandum resolution reallocating $4.15 million from the Westside Regional Park Funds to multiple park projects.
Back on April 15th, 2025, the city council approved a motion of direction Parks and Recreation to reallocate $4.15 million for five park projects. The funds will be allocated for the following parks: Bunny Trail Passive Recreation Park, West Colleen Natural Area Trail, Goodnight Ranch Community Park, Saddle Ridge Pocket Park, Persa Heritage Hiking Bike Trail. Just a little background on the park projects, the Bunny Trail Passive Park, that's $46,600 for design, the West Colleen Natural Area Trail, again, $52,200 for design, the Goodnight Ranch Community Park is $1.862 million for design and construction, the Saddle Ridge Pocket Park is $213,000 for construction, the Persa Heritage Playground and Restroom is $1.588 million for design and construction, and the Persa Heritage Splash Pad for design and construction is $396,200, with a reserve for another overall cost of $562,300. Staff recommends that the city council approve the acceptance of reallocated funds in the amount of $4.15 million for the Westside Regional Park Project.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Victory Lap, during the last council meeting, we determined to allocate, reallocate, rather, funding to, from one long-term park project to multiple viable park projects that would come online sooner than later. This is a monument of vote for me as it effectively delivers on my promise to deliver much-needed parkland projects to the western portion of the city. So to get to the point, I want to express a deep appreciation to this council for acknowledging the need and meeting the needs, and that's on behalf of my constituents in District Four. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Seeing no additional questions, Mr. Murphy, thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 25076, consider a memorandum resolution approving a firework display application at the Colleen Athletic Complex on July 5th, 2025.
Welcome, Ms. Messer, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and council. This item is regarding the fireworks display for the Red, White, and Blue Music Festival, which will be celebrated on July 5th, 2025. Public fireworks display is being planned for the event at the Colleen Athletic Complex, which will be viewable from downtown. Section 11-6 of the Code of Ordinances provides that the city council may permit the use of fireworks for public display, and that section includes the application requirements, namely, the name of the organization sponsoring the display, evidence of financial responsibility. namely, the name of the organization sponsoring the display, evidence of financial responsibility, date and time, license issued by the state, approximate number and kind of fireworks, et cetera, et cetera. So staff reviewed the applications, I'm sorry, city staff initiated the application on March 4th, 2025. Magic Display Pyrotechnics FX is the pyrotechnician for the event, which will take place again on July 5th at 9:30 PM at the Clean Athletic Complex. All documentation required by Section 11-6 has been provided, and the Clean Fire Marshal has reviewed the application with no significant findings. Whoops. With that, staff is recommending approval of the application from, for Magic Display Pyrotechnics FX for a fireworks display on July 5th. Happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Messer. Thank you. Attention, Madam Secretary, staff, citizens, and council would like to take a five-minute break just before we begin our public hearings, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call our meeting back to order. Madam Secretary, we're going to start with PH 25018. Thank you.
PH 25018, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Central Texas Development Services on behalf of RSBP Developers Incorporated, Flume Number 2502, to amend the comprehensive plan's future land use map from a neighborhood commercial designation to a regional commercial designation for approximately 2.376 acres, being Lot 1, Block 2, out of Tremere Estates' Phase 1 replat. This property is locally addressed as 5310 Tremere Road, Clean Texas.
Counsel, this item is, it's a request submitted by Central Texas Development Services on behalf of RSBP Developers to amend the future land use map designation from neighborhood commercial to regional commercial. If approved, the applicant's intent is to submit, submit a subsequent request to rezone the property to B5 Business District. The red star on your screen indicates the location of that property. This is a side-by-side, so on the left is the existing future land use map, but you can see the property is designated neighborhood commercial, and on the right is the proposed future land use map designation of regional commercial. This is a view of the subject property facing south on Tremere. This is a view from the subject property facing north on Tremere. This is a view of the subject property facing east. As you can see, it's currently undeveloped. And a view from the subject property facing east across Tremere Road. Property is in the Nolan Creek Leon River watershed, and the FEMA flood insurance rate map is impacted by a letter of map revision effective April 22nd, 2013. So you can see that blue outline is the area impacted by the LOMAR. The area is shown on this map as being within the floodplain, however, this LOMAR map essentially removed the majority of the floodplain from the property. Subject property is currently zoned B3, which allows for a variety of neighborhood commercial uses, including retail, restaurants, offices, personal services establishments, gas stations, convenience stores, banks, oil and lube stations, auto parts sales, new at retail, mini and self-storage facilities, and other similar commercial uses. If approved, the requested flume amendment would allow the applicant to submit a subsequent request for B5, and the B5 zoning district allows for a wide range of heavy commercial uses and heavy automotive uses, including auto sales, impound yards, trailer sales and rental, auto repair, tire recapping and retreading, mobile home sales, liquor stores, halfway houses, building material and lumber sales with outside storage permitted. Sorry. Staff is of the determination that the applicant's request to amend the future land use map designation from neighborhood commercial to regional commercial is not consistent with the character of the area or with the recommendations of the Clean 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Staff is of the determination that the current B3 zoning is appropriate, given the location, given the adjacent residential land use and the proximity to the floodplain. We notified 51 surrounding property owners regarding this request, and of those notified, 18 reside outside the city of Clean. To date, we've received one written response and opposition to this request. On April 1st of this year, the council directed staff to provide written response forms in the notification letters sent for flume amendments. The notice for this flume amendment was mailed out to surrounding property owners on March 12th, and therefore, the flume, flume notification letters for this case did not include the written response form. This is the notification boundary for the request. And with that, staff is recommending disapproval of the applicant's request to amend the future land use map designation from neighborhood commercial to regional commercial. During the public hearing held on March 24th, one citizen spoke in opposition to the request. At the regular council, at the, I'm sorry, at the regular meeting on March 24th, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended disapproval of the request by a vote of three to two. Commissioners Jacomozy and Ellis expressed that they were in support of the request because the adjacent property is already zoned B5. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Messer, for the presentation. Does the applicant, or are you aware if the applicant has an intended end use, or is this purely speculative at this point?
I can let the applicant speak to that further, but it was my understanding that the intent was originally to sell it to the adjacent property owner, but I don't think that's, that's currently the intent.
Okay, because the letter from opposition was from the adjacent landowner.
There were two, there were two letters of opposition that were submitted prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission. One was from the owner of the pet grooming business on the other side of Tremere, and the second was from the adjacent business. Following the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, I reached out to the owner of the adjacent business for clarification, because, again, it was my understanding that it was his intent to purchase the property, but there was a letter in opposition. So when I reached out to him, he explained that he wanted to withdraw his letter of opposition. So we originally had two, one was withdrawn, which left us with the one.
Understood. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Segarra.
Is this something that would require a majority vote on it, since it got disapproved by the city council?
This is a flume amendment, not a zoning request, so it's a simple majority.
We don't need that? It's just a majority? Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no additional questions, Ms. Messer. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
PH 25019, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Welltext Investments on behalf of EAS Investments, case number Z2503, to rezone Lot 2, Lot Point 3, Lot Point 4, and Lots 5 and 7, Block 1, out of the Southwest Crossing Edition, from A Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District, and RT1 Residential Townhouse Single Family District. The subject property is generally located southeast of Wells Fargo Drive between Stagecoach Road and Turkey Trot Road, Clean Texas.
Thank you, Ms. Messer.
Thank you. This item is a request that was submitted by Welltext Investments on behalf of EAS Investments to rezone approximately 21 acres located northeast of the intersection of Wells Fargo Drive and Stagecoach Road, from A Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District and RT1 Residential Townhouse Single Family District. If approved, the applicant intends to develop the property into single-family and townhome lots. The request includes approximately 14.91 acres of R1 and approximately 16.16 acres of RT1. The red star on your screen indicates the location of that property. This is an aerial of the site. As you can see, it's currently undeveloped. The area in the northern part of the request here is the request, is the area requested for R1, and this area down here is the area requested for RT1 townhomes. This is the view, a view of the subject property facing north from Stagecoach Road. This is a view of the adjacent property facing south along Turkey Trot. View of the adjacent property facing west on Stagecoach. And a view facing east along Stagecoach. Subject property is located within the control growth sector on the growth sector map and designated residential mix on the future land use map. The residential mix place type encourages up to 25% non-residential and up to 95% residential use mix. Property is located within the city of Clean Development Zone Number 6, which is consists of 65% residential and 34% commercial uses. Staff finds that the applicant's request for R1 and RT1 is consistent with the recommendations of the Clean 2040 Comprehensive Plan. This request supports or furthers several comprehensive plan recommendations, including using place types and complete neighborhoods as building blocks, improving the physical productivity of development, encouraging incremental evolution, diversifying housing mix, and building complete neighborhoods. Staff estimates that the applicant can develop approximately 154 single-family lots. Based on that number, the parkland dedication requirements would be roughly $184,800 total. We notified 34 surrounding property owners regarding this request. Of those, nine reside outside the 200-foot notification boundary, but within the 400-foot notification boundary, and three live outside the city of Clean. As of today, the staff, staff has received two written responses in opposition to this request. This is the notification boundary. During the public hearing held on March 24th, there were seven citizens that spoke in opposition to this request. Staff finds that the applicant's request is consistent with the recommendations of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and with the residential mix place type. We are therefore recommending approval of the applicant's request to rezone the property from Ag to R1 and RT1 as presented. At the regular meeting on March 24th, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request by a vote of three to two, with Commissioners Plakelman and Sabri in opposition to the motion. Commissioner Sabri stated that she would support R1 lots in this location, but was not in favor of townhomes, and Commissioner Plakelman stated that he was in opposition to the proposed density and expressed concerns about the amount of opposition to the request. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Messer. Seeing none. Madam Secretary.
PH 25020, hold a public hearing and consider a city-initiated request, case number Z2507, to rezone approximately .51 acres, being part of Lot 1, Block 1, out of the Bay subdivision from B5 Business District to R3A Multifamily Apartment Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 1301 Harris Avenue, Clean Texas.
This item is a city-initiated request to rezone roughly one-half of an acre located at 1301 Harris Avenue. There's an existing six-unit multifamily apartment building on the property, which is considered legal nonconforming. If approved, this request will change the property owner's current zoning to make it consistent with the existing multifamily land use. The red star on your screen indicates the location of this property. This is an aerial of the, the property to be rezoned. This is a view of the subject property facing north. View of the adjacent property facing south across Harris Avenue. View of the subject property facing east on Harris. And view of the subject property facing west on Harris. Property is located within the infill and enhance area on the growth sector map and is designated neighborhood commercial on the future land use map. Staff finds that this request furthers several comprehensive plan recommendations, including encouraging incremental evolution of neighborhoods and shifting the market to include existing housing. We notified 53 surrounding property owners, and we've received no written responses in support or opposition. This is the notification boundary. With that, staff's recommendation, staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request to rezone the subject property from B5 to R3A. And on March 24th, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request by a vote of five to zero. Happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none. Madam Secretary.
PH 25021, hold a public hearing and consider a city-initiated request, case number Z2508, to rezone 10 properties, being part of Lot 48 and all of Lots 49 through 51, Block 3, out of the Freedom Valley Edition, and Lots 6 through 11, Block 4, out of the Freedom Valley replat from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject properties are locally addressed as 1102, 1104, 1106, 1216, 1218, 1220, 1231, 1233, 1235, and 1237 Liberty Bell Loop, Clean Texas.
This is another city-initiated request to rezone 10 properties from B5 to R1. The purpose of this request is to change the zoning of the properties to make them consistent with the current residential land use. If approved, the city-initiated request will bring the residential use of the properties into compliance with the zoning ordinance. The red star on your screen indicates the location of the property. This is an aerial of, of the properties. So you can see they're currently developed as single-family homes, however, they are zoned B5, so the intent here is to zone them R1 to make them consistent with the existing land use. This is a view of the subject properties looking north on Liberty Bell Loop. View of the subject property looking towards Liberty Bell Loop. View facing west towards Jeffers. Oh. Just happened. The battery in this thing is dead. Okay. The subject properties are located within the neighborhood infill area on the growth sector map and are designated residential mix on the future land use map. Staff finds that the city-initiated request is consistent with the recommendations outlined in the Clean 2040 Comprehensive Plan. We notified 90 surrounding property owners, and as of today, we've received no responses, either in support or opposition. This is the notification boundary on your screen. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the request to rezone the properties to R1 as presented, and the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none. Madam Secretary.
PH 25022, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance renaming Bunny Trail to AL Davis Trail.
Ms. Messer.
On April 15th, the City Council approved a motion of direction to hold a public hearing regarding a request to rename Bunny Trail to AL Davis Trail in honor of retired Command Sergeant Major Alfonso Lee Davis, also known as the Clean Running Man. Process for changing the name of a street is set forth in Clean Code of Ordinances, Chapter 25, Article 4, and in the city's adopted naming policy. Per Section 25, 121, a public hearing on the proposed renaming must be held by the City Council prior to taking action. Staff notified the owners of 97 properties of Bunny, Bunny Trail, and notice was published in the newspaper on April 20th. Clean Code of Ordinances, Section 25, 118, Subsection 5, and the city's renaming policy state that applications for a street name change may be considered to honor a person, place, institution, group, entity, event, or similar subject. Section 6-1, Subsection C of the renaming policy provides that the renaming of a city street may be considered if an individual has made a, quote, "exceptional contribution" to the city. Staff has estimated that the cost for the proposed renaming would be $4,056. With that, staff's recommendation is that the council hold a public hearing and consider the request to rename Bunny Trail to, to AL Davis Trail in honor of retired Command Sergeant Major Alfonso Lee Davis.
Seeing no, no inquiries, no questions, no comments. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Madam Mayor Protem, we are now at the citizen comments portion of the agenda.
Thank you. Citizens comments on agenda items. Four minutes with one minute time allotted for City Council to respond with a statement or explanation without Four minutes with one minute time allotted for City Council to respond with a statement or explanation without engaging in dialogue. Welcome.
Words matter, so I would recommend the presentations don't say that staff has already decided to move forward with anything before it comes to the council for a vote. And then money will be transferred, which means that there is an assumption that you already have a vote you are being told you have to make. So, 60 mil TPO roofing membrane costs between $1.50 to $2.50 per square foot. For the full roof, the entire 54,000 square feet were replaced, that would cost approximately $135,000. A quick review of other municipal costs using this exact material is generally $7 per square foot when labor is added. On the high end, if you include flashing and other contingencies, it would be $10 per square foot. That means for a full roof replacement, it would cost the city about $540,000. We're paying close to that for repairs, and neither quote indicates how many square foot of this roof are being repaired. We don't actually know any of the breakdown on it because there, there is no individualized quote involved. It's just your, here's your lump sum cost. We could get this done at a lower cost if we bid this out to the public. Clearly, there is no rush, even if, if we can't even fund it until at least January of 2026, and it would be paid in FY '26. As far as the rec center, how did the cost of $60,000 a year get settled on? How was First National selected? Marketing costs for all of this that is listed in that agreement is a fraction of what they are paying, or what they would be paying to do even a fraction of that advertising. The firm is going to get $420,000 for this. And that's if we keep it for the 21 years. Don't forget, we still need to pay 50% of the sign costs that go on the buildings. And since it doesn't say who's going to pay for the advertising in the fields, all of the, the other marketing materials that would have their name, I'm presuming the marketing materials would be paid for by the city of Colleen, since we print our own marketing materials. First National Bank brought in over $128 million in service and overdraft fees in one year alone. Pretty sure they can afford more than $60,000 a year to be marketed across the entire city and have their name on two sides of one of our, one of our buildings. Are we so desperate for money, we're putting ourselves on the discount rack? Keep in mind, our comp plan calls for us to brand our city, not brand it as sold to the lowest bidder. It should have been put out to bid for the highest bidder and limit what they get. Name on the building and receipt is still less than the marketing for two billboard-sized signs, additional constant acknowledgement. Now that we know who is behind this, the desperation makes sense. With KISD MOA, the city will have limited access to indoor facilities because sports schedules still happen within the district. So Monday through Friday, there are still activities going on. Citizens of Colleen already have the right to use playgrounds, basketball courts, and open fields outside of school hours. Also, the gyms will be available only from September through March, less than half a year. Since we are going to need to pay for the facilities, are we putting a cap on how much we will pay? Do we have a rate schedule from them? Because we have a rate schedule for KCCC. I get that this is a strategic starting point, but I agree, we are getting the short end of this. Before we sign, it should be right, not a conversation point. It's kind of like going into college, planning out parks, and doing it all unilaterally. It fails. In City Code, Section 31-503, allowed without a permit, number five is flags and number 12 is banners. There's no size associated with flags in our ordinance. And our comp plan calls for supporting and growing small businesses from within. This is the complete opposite of that. And finally, you should worry more about citizen relations and media relations. With two people not here, there's only one person.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Your time is up. I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Onto the next citizen comment. Mr. Michael Fernino.
I see that our mayor is so transparent she has achieved invisibility. On the subject of media relations, it's her agenda item, and she can't even be here to discuss it. But, lack of transparency from the mayor, as usual, as there's no descriptor in the agenda packet. So, is this item to address her most recent and not an isolated incident of her losing all control of herself and a meeting? Is it to scold the media that were present for reporting what we all saw? Perhaps it is to address the Herald printing a copy of her letter of reprimand that she had no authority on her own to author or issue, and with no power that she has? Or is it simply shock that they didn't help shield her or gloss over her abuse of authority after so many years of doing so previously? Marijuana ordinance. This is one very big and expensive, I told you so. Marbury versus Madison, Law 101. My predictions on this outcome will come to pass whether you like it or not. In the end, what was it all about? Catering to the low-information, low-capacity types in this city in the efforts of a George Soros-funded insurgency. We heard from the medical marijuana crowd, which is not now, nor was ever an issue. Any further commentary trying to relate those two subjects is nonsense and a waste of time. The issue is that this council, in pure, in an attempt to blatantly cater to the aforementioned low-information and low-capacity types, demonstrating that not only they, but you all have neither the slightest understanding of nor regard for the law. Facts don't care about your feelings. Never have, never will. The failed empathetic stunt failed to address or even consider that at the core of much of the criminal activity in this city involves the sale and control of illegal drugs and marijuana. If anything, you encouraged it. This council, the city attorney, and his blind supporters have ignored this reality for far too long on a great many things. This is a republic. You'll remember that from the Pledge of Allegiance and to the republic for which it stands. This is not a direct democracy. You've spent hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars in pursuit of your own ass-kicking from the county attorney and the attorney general. Just admit defeat. You were never in the right, or is that too much crow for even a party of 10 to eat?
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Pro Tem, congratulations, by the way, again. So, a little fast and furious because I want to try to get to each and every single one like I always try to do, right? Because I ask a question usually, and I usually don't get any real answers or get, get it reiterated. So let's just try to keep my question clear, right? So, RS 25064, we're spending $333,782.32. I make that number, I state that number because out of total, when I do the numbers, we're looking at $11,611,521.60 that we're going to spend just for today's agenda. It's a lot of money. Means my taxes are going up, right? Going to put it on my house. When you look at this contract, it also says that if the contractor damages the building, the city is liable for it. I don't know how we're liable for a contractor that does damage to our building, how we're liable. I don't get it. I think somebody needs to read that contract again and figure some stuff out, because there's a lot of stuff in there that I don't understand. Like their materials. If they ain't got it, that's, that's our delay, not theirs, because there's no ending time for this contract to occur. They don't have to have the materials if it's not there. I don't know why they don't have it already. If they're bidding for it, they should already have the materials on hand or be able to acquire it. But this contract allows them not to have to have that. So, I'm a little curious with that one. The license plate reader, it's a double-edged sword, is all I'm going to say, right? If somebody decides at this city council that they want to get somebody's license plate or find out where they're going to, can they do that? And if they can, or if they do, or if the city, or if the police department does something, what's the penalty? Who's going to jail? Or is it just, oh, no, no, I can resign. I can just, you know, quit and go away? I don't think so. I think that there should be some kind of city ordinance added to that for that tyrannical piece of equipment that's kind of necessary, but kind of tyrannical. RS 25066. Why wasn't this part of the building anyway? Right? If we're replacing all this equipment, are we going to have to do it for the other eight buildings? Because this one is having to get it done, so all the other buildings got to get it done too. It's going to add up to be a lot if we, if there was a big mistake on this one building. Or is this an anomaly for this AC unit, right? What's the problem? Why is it just this building that has to have the replacement and/or repair? And not all of them, since they've all, you know, got the same type of equipment, really, HVAC. 25067, right? Is this going to be AI-ready? And is the air conditioning system for that building already going to be addressed due to the anticipated heat wave? These electronics, these electronics that are going to be in there are going to create a lot of heat. So, have we already addressed that issue for that building? Awesome job on the $135,000 for three of these pumps. It's normally almost a third more than that, so we got a great deal. Good job for this department for knocking that out of the park. 25071, five million, right? We're going to break even in 20 years for this building, right? Out of the rent fees. We're breaking even.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Your time is up.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Pro Tem. I would like to talk about design build. Y'all do design builds. I see you've got a $5 million design bill for vertical. It's my understanding, and I could be wrong with this, I heard this many, many years ago, that once a city gets so much population, they can design-build roads. It doesn't have to be vertical. It can be horizontal. But when I sit out here, and I've, I've sit out here many, many years, and we give design bills, and they're to out-of-town people. They're not your local. They don't have employees here. They don't shop here. They don't help build your city. I'm asking if y'all will look at, if there is a design bill, which I told there was, I do not know it for a fact, but if y'all look, and y'all can design-build things with local people, I think y'all ought to look at that very closely. Because we're here, we support our community, and we would appreciate it if our community supports us. So, that's what I wanted to mention, is this design-build issue that I've watched year after year after year. And you may have an opportunity to design-build what I call horizontal, which would be roads. And if you do, I would appreciate y'all looking at that and try to support your local people. And, and even your, your local engineers. And local for me is between Temple, Colleen, Belton, Cops Cove, your local people. Because they're the ones that are paying the bills. And we would like to have an opportunity to design-build. And I can tell you, I've listened to many conversations up here the last 30, 90 days on Featherline. Y'all talking about two, two and a half, three years to build Featherline? I would tell you, if you can design-build it, you know, I can design-build it in a year and a half. Does that mean anything? Probably not. But just look at your local people, and look at what we're really doing, and try to support us as much as you can, because we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our citizens' comments. There were a few questions that were asked, and I do have a few questions I want to address. And if we cannot address it now, if we could just make sure we get with the citizens that inquired about the questions, please. The question of 25-064 regarding QR, the roofing company. If we can just get clarity, my understanding is there's a potential projection of supply chain break or delays. I don't know that that is a fact, but if we can confirm that there's a potential, is that what is the question was? Why would they not have materials available to complete the build? Ms. McNair? Or materials delays regarding the roof?
I'm not, could you repeat the question, please?
So the question, it was QR about the building supplies, not having those available and potential material delays. He's referring to a line in the contract that I do not have directly in front of me. But my understanding was that there was a potential of supply chain break. So, can you explain how that process works with materials and what happens if you don't have access to what you need? And you're in the middle of a construction process.
I don't know.
The reason why I'm confused is because I think the gentleman was referring to the second quote that we're not using. So, we are using the quote for QR, quick roofing. And the other one, I did look through that, and we're not using it, so we didn't go any further with that.
Thank you. So, thank you very much. Private citizen had a question regarding PD for, regarding the license plate search. Sir, just for clarity, is it possible for a private citizen to order a license plate search on another private citizen?
No, ma'am. Not, not through the police department. They may do it through DPS, but not through the police department.
Is there an ordinance that is needed for police protection or to address this particular service that we were providing?
No, ma'am. Law enforcement agencies throughout the nation have been using the use of their Texas, their own state database to, you know, find out the owner of that vehicle that we're trying to investigate.
Thank you. Thank you. And then lastly, there was a question regarding the CSI design build using out-of-town versus local. Do you have confirmation that Synergy Construction is local, or where are they located?
Mr. Wilson's coming up to answer that question.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
And I'll just add, if I could, I mean, whenever our bids are out online, I mean, they're, they're available on the city website for anyone to view, so anyone is welcome to bid on those. They're also advertised in a local newspaper as required by law. So anyone is welcome to bid on those properties.
Thank you for that clarity. Yes, Mr. Wilson?
She just made my comment. The, there was an RFQ put out, and it was advertised, I believe, for 45 days using the media that she indicated. So, anybody locally had an opportunity to bid. The contractor we have is not local. They're out of Georgetown. But it was a formal, adequate RFQ put out through all the proper channels.
Thank you. I do appreciate that information. They are within our region and that it is open to a swath of the public.
And I will just state too, there are also the contractor that's doing the Skylark Terminal Building and doing an excellent job. So they're known quality as well.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. Did you have anything else you needed to add, Madam Assistant? Thank you. Seeing no additional questions, we have no additional citizens' comments at this time. Madam Secretary? I'm sorry. Mr. Councilmember Solomon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. There's also a question, I believe, from a citizen acts in reference to how do we come up with First National name on the recreation? Was there a process that we?
Yes, sir. So Sportsman Solutions takes care of contacting anyone that they believe may be interested. Like I said, they do have a methodology that they use to determine who may be interested. They reach out to a number of entities to see who, who may want to put their name on a specific facility, what they're looking for, what that dollar amount could be. Immediately after their contract was approved through the city council back in January, they did join our local chamber. So that way, they could be invested and involved in the community as they're reaching out to make those contacts.
Okay. So at that time, was there any other applicants or?
There's a list of over about 400 people that they are reaching out to actively. Of course, some people say no, and that's okay, and they move on to others on the list. And some of it's based on the data that they have available. What type of revenue is brought in? What, how much do they usually spend on advertising? It's, it's a number of factors. And again, we're happy to bring them in to discuss that in more detail.
Thank you. And there was another question on the same building. Is the city liable? Citizen acts about the city being liable for damages that the company would installing the sign. Are we liable?
Are we liable?
I believe that was for the roof project.
Was it roof project?
That was for the roof, and again, that was with the sample contract that we are not using. And there's a whole section in there, Section F, that says when the contractor is liable and when he is not. And they basically were, my interpretation is saying that if it's already damaged, or if it's not due to their own negligence or poor craftsmanship, workmanship, then they will not take responsibility for it. But again, that's the quote that we are not using.
Great. I just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem.
You're welcome. Thank you. I think we're ready to move on to our regular session. Three minutes, we have three minutes, three times each for council. We're going to do our consent agenda at this time. Councilmember Boyd.
Make a motion to approve the, let me slow down, take that back. Go ahead.
You've got to read it, the caption.
Secretary?
Consent agenda. RS 25-064, RS 25-065, RS 25-066, RS 25-067, RS 25-068, RS 25-069, RS 25-070, RS 25-071, RS 25-072, RS 25-073, RS 25-074, RS 25-075, and RS 25-076.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Boyd. Do we have a second? Councilmember Segaro?
Second.
You have a second by Councilmember Segaro. All in favor, please vote yes. Any opposed, please vote no. We have all in favor, and a vote six to zero. Madam Secretary?
Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Central Texas Development Services on behalf of RSBP Developers Incorporated. Flume number 25-02 to amend the comprehensive plan's future land use map from a neighborhood commercial designation to a regional commercial designation for approximately 2.376 acres being Lot 1, Block 2, out of Tremere Estates Phase 1 replat. This property is locally addressed as 5310 Tremere Road, Clean, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan's future land use map by changing the designation of approximately 2.376 acres being Lot 1, Block 2, out of the Tremere Estates Phase 1 replat, from a neighborhood commercial designation to a regional commercial designation, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, providing further repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Council Miss Mesher has given this presentation previously. Do we need her to repeat? Thank you. I'd like to invite the applicant to present comments, testimony, or any oral arguments at this time. We're going to hold open the public hearing. Citizen comment for public hearing. We're going to start with Ms. Melissa Brown.
The flume is an integral part of the comprehensive plan. It shouldn't be changed on a whim. It shouldn't be changed with one public hearing and no town hall. Some of you have ran advertisements about implementing a new comprehensive plan, but then vote to undermine it every meeting while they laugh and tease the citizens who sit in front of you opposing it. In this case, it should very carefully be considered the character of the surrounding neighborhood. This is primarily residential. It's not an area where higher intensity zoning for commercial would really be appropriate. Additionally, staff had recommended against this in part because of how much of it is in a flood zone, and the potential negative impact to the environment. In this case, changing the flume the way that it's requested would negatively impact the quality of life for the citizens who live in that area. This is, if I remember what they said correctly, already in a legal non-conforming, so should that impound yard go away, it would no longer be a B5. And in addition to that, why add additional stress, noise, and higher intensity to a neighborhood where then your staff is going to get the calls and the complaints about it? Staff is going to have to feel that, and the best they can do would be able to say, well, the city council approved it and said that they could be there. I think that in this case, this would be detrimental to everyone who lives around there, all the people who have to walk around there. I encourage you to go along with what the planning and zoning decided, and what staff recommends, and vote against this. Thanks.
Thank you. Close public hearing. We got a motion, a second, and a vote to consider the ordinance. Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor Protem, I move to disapprove based on staff recommendation.
We have Alvarez with a vote to disapprove. Councilmember Boyd? I'm sorry, Councilmember Adams.
May I have a turn on a second?
We have a motion to disapprove by Councilmember Alvarez, and a second by Councilmember Adams. All in favor, please vote yes. Any opposed, vote no. Looks like we have six in favor. Madam Secretary, one moment, please. The way some of these are written, there is a little bit of confusion as far as the agenda numbers. They're labeled differently by each constituent. So there are some people that wanted to speak on 018 at this point. Is there anything that we can do as far as letting them speak to that, since we have already taken that record vote? Are they able to rescind their votes? We can open and back up the citizens' comments.
We could have a motion to rehear that item by someone, and everybody voted in favor of it, so any, anybody could vote.
Councilmember Adams.
Mayor, may I pretend to keep him with our governance standards and rules of procedure, I move to rescind the previous vote to allow the citizens to speak in public hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Solomon.
I second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon. Thank you, council, and thank you, citizens. Please bear with me just one moment. We're going to call Mr. Sean. We're going to open. All in favor, please vote yes. Any opposed, vote no. Okay, we have five in favor and one opposed. We're going to reopen PH 25-018 public hearing. Mr. Sean Price.
Thank you, Ms. Protem. I appreciate that. Sorry for any confusion that may have happened on the paper. I did write it kind of fast, so I do apologize for that, if there was a misunderstanding there on my part. I'm just a little confused about, and I was wondering, is B5 worse, or is residential neighborhood worse? So what gives the heavy equipment and stuff like that, or used car dealership or anything like that, to be operated within a residential area? Is it neighborhood one, or is it the B5 one? Because I'm a little confused right now, from what was said by everybody. I'm just like totally lost. What zoning is what zoning? So what is the current zone for the property right now, and what is, what is able to be sold or operated versus what is being asked to be it transformed to? Because I'm totally lost. Because I'm all about, you know, being homogeneous to the neighborhood. Right? Don't need loud noises. I like my sanctuary, I like my quiet, right? From 11 to 7, let's make, you know, let's make it nice and able for us to sleep. So I'm just a little confused with the way the zoning happens. So if that could be explained, that'd be, you know, it could lower my questions, in other words. And I'm sorry that, you know, I interjected into your vote, but this is also the fourth time that I haven't been able to do this, but this is the first time that y'all retrofitted me to come in and be able to speak on such an occasion, so I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Miss Mesher, can I call Miss Mesher to the, excuse me?
I'm going to first attempt to answer the question.
Thank you.
So this item is a future land use map amendment. So the future land use map is a component of the comprehensive plan, and it's the map that dictates how the city intends to grow in the future. It is not the zoning map. So the zoning of a property dictates the permitted uses on that property. So in order to submit a zoning request, the request needs to be consistent with the future land use map. If a zoning request is not consistent with the future land use map, the applicant must first submit a future land use map amendment request. So that's what this is. And the intent of this request is or would be to change the designation from neighborhood commercial to regional commercial, which would allow him to subsequently request to rezone the property from B3, which is its current zoning designation, to B5. B3 is the neighborhood commercial designation that allows for retail and restaurants and personal services establishments. That's your nail salons and your dry cleaners and that type of use. The B5, which if this request is approved, would change the future land use map designation to allow the request for B5 to come forward, is the zoning designation that allows the heavy commercial and automotive uses. Having said that, after my presentation on this item, Mr. Purser did advise me that his request is to withdraw the item from consideration. So as I understand it, the council can consider, consider that request or proceed with, with taking a vote?
Madam City Attorney? The question was, can you withdraw that at this point? We're still in public hearing at this point. Do I need to close public hearing?
Yes, you need to close the public hearing.
Thank you. We'll stand by. We've got one more person. Thank you very much, Miss Mesher. Ms. Amy Retz.
Ma'am, I second your argument.
Thank you, Ms. Retz. Mr. Purser.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I did get with Ms. Wallace, while ago, and asked her, told her that I was going to pull the request. Simply, I don't know that I agree with this residential, and I don't know I agree with you, Mr. Alvarez, that, or maybe it's with Ms. Wallace. The next-door property is B5. So I don't know how I'm not consistent, because it is B5. All this started, I'll give you a history. The man is next door in the impound yard, has been wanting to buy the property for 10, 15 years. I wouldn't sell it to him. Finally, I decided, because of other circumstances, I'd sell the property. So that all fell through for a bunch, a bunch of reasons. So B3's fine, but B5's next door, and so I don't understand how it's not consistent. Because I hear this consistent thing, and I'm going to talk about it in just a minute. But B5 next door, if y'all understand, I'm up against a impound yard, and I'm up against a flood plain. And behind me, I'm up against duplexes, like 40 or 50 of them. So, and this is on a five-lane road. So I don't, you know, it's a judgment call. B5, no. B3, B2? It's a judgment call. But it's not, it's not out of the question. It depends on how y'all feel, and I don't really care. I do care how you feel, that's not, I want a table, I want to pull it, because the business transaction is finished, he's not going to buy it, so I'll come back to y'all at a later date, and I'm going to do something else with the property. So I'd like to withdraw it, but I do not understand this consistency, and I do not understand when the, my boundary, my northern property line joins B5, and I'm not consistent. I don't get it. And I've got a five-lane road out in front of me. That's all commercial up and down there. I don't understand those kind of things. But anyway, I would like to pull the request, and we'll discuss that on another day.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments for public hearing, we're going to close public hearing. Ms. Holly Clements, we have a question for you regarding the pulling of this. Is there a vote that needs to take place at this point? Can you please advise?
It is on the agenda for action, and so you have a request from the applicant to pull the item. So you can, you could still vote, you could still continue to vote on the item, or you could accept the withdrawal and postpone indefinitely the item. So you would need a motion, one way or the other?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Mayor, I move to honor the applicant's request and pull the agenda item.
Thank you for making a motion to withdraw the PH 25-018. Councilmember Segaro?
I second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, vote yes. Any opposed, please vote no. All in favor. Madam Secretary. Thank you.
Madam, are you ready?
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Yes, ma'am. PH 25-019. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Welltex Investments on behalf of EAS Investments, case number Z2503, to rezone Lot 2, Lot Point 3, Lot Point 4, and Lots 5 and 7, Block 1, out of the Southwest Crossing addition from A Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District, and RT1 Residential Townhouse Single Family District. The subject property is generally located southeast of Wells Fargo Drive between Stagecoach Road and Turkey Trot Road, Clean, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the city of Clean zoning ordinance by changing the zoning approximately 21.07 acres being Lot 2, Lot Point 3, and Lot Point 4, and Lots 5 and 7, Block 1, out of the Southwest Crossing addition from A Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District, and RT1 Residential Townhome, Single, Townhouse, Single Family District, providing a savings clause, providing further repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Council Miss Mesher has gone over this presentation. Do we need it again? Thank you. I'm going to invite the applicant to present comments, testimony, and oral arguments.
My name is Josh Welch. I'm the applicant here on this case. Thank you for having me. I appreciate your time, council. So this case, and the reason we've worked through, spent quite a bit of time working through with staff to come up with a good plan here for this property. If you look at the map, you can see there's a, and the reason we came up with a plan to put the townhomes here, if you look at the map and there's a hard corner up there that's part of this property owner's property, that property's already zoned, commercial, I think it's C3, I think. And so with having a commercial corner, and then having, of course, our two-year-old road front is there with Stagecoach, we're using that townhome property as then having a nice buffer between that commercial and the roadway up there, between then the single-family residential going behind it. And then staff did a good job with the presentation, and as they mentioned, this did pass at P&amp;Z. And also, this fits in with y'all's future land use plan with what's being called for in the area in several different ways. So we would very much appreciate it if y'all followed your future land use plan and would approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to open the public hearing, beginning with Ms. Amy Retz.
My name is Amy Retz. I am requesting passionately the I am requesting passionately that you guys decline this particular request. One, we haven't seen a platform. We don't know what they intend. All we've got is that they could possibly put 154 townhome, or houses in this location. It's not that big. Tremere is not, or Turkey Trot is not going to handle that traffic. Wells Fargo is not going to handle that traffic. It's going to put everything on Stagecoach, which is already busy enough. Putting townhomes in the lot that he's putting townhome in, yeah, puts a buffer between that and the new houses, but it puts those townhomes right up against other houses. You're putting townhomes in the middle of a bunch of single-family residences, which is not really consistent with the character of the neighborhood itself. We did have an example the other day of the, Stagecoach was shut down, traffic on Turkey Trot was backed up onto Stagecoach and way far back, just trying to get people through that stop sign at the end. It just can't, the infrastructure is not there for it. Also, the infrastructure for the police department, I made this case when you guys approved Prosser's petition for his property to be rezoned. The question came up, do we have enough police force? I don't think we do. We've actually had situations where violent domestics have been put on hold. People have been seriously hurt, sent to the hospital, because we don't have enough police response to take care of this. If that's your family member, do you want to add to that congestion? The question was put to the police chief, do we have enough? He said, well, the point, the recommendation is 2.4 per thousand. That gives you 383 sworn officers required right now, according to their website. They have 265 allotments. Doesn't mean that they have those filled. They just have that many allotments. Every time we put high-density housing in, we're putting more stress on the police department, more stress on the fire department. Chief Kobinski last time flat-out said that we do not have enough fire services to cover everything. And that was evidenced in the Atkinson Fire. We had to have agencies from outside of Colleen come and help them, and agencies come and staff the fire stations, just to get everybody covered, to make sure that if you did have a heart attack while it was going on, that you actually received services. We're stressing these guys beyond belief. And if you want more proof about them being stressed out, Colleen ISD opened up their mandatory, they had to have mandatory officers at every school. And when they opened up that application, quite a few KPD officers retired from Colleen and went over there because they're stressed out with the city. They want to stay police officers, but they don't want to do that in a city that they don't feel supported in. And that is all coming down on the citizens. And that is all from high-density housing that's we're creating, and we're just creating more. It's not a good way to go. It's not a good way to show your citizens that you care about them or support them. We don't necessarily disagree with developing the property. We just want a more, we want single-family homes, and we want at least quarter-acre lots. I prefer half-acre, but I'm okay with quarter-acre lots for each one of those houses. It reduces the amount of people. It does give you guys your future land use. It does give you guys the residential that you need. We have absolutely zero need in that area for townhomes or duplexes. So I really hope that you guys just understand that most of us have lived out there our entire lives, generational's, and we're being faced with bringing in people who want to rent, who won't care about the property, who won't care about the neighborhood, who won't care about their neighbors. It's just not, it doesn't make sense for this area. So I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Retz. Mr. Brian, Mr. Retz. Thank you, sir.
I want to just, real quick, I'm really upset in the process. This is probably not y'all's, this is just the way the process works. We did not get a letter about this. We actually found out about it from our neighbors and friends. If you draw the line, our property line ended right at the boundary where y'all sent out the letters, even though I've got an easement road there. Most of the people that got this are going to be the cattle that are in the area that this lane has fixed to be taken up because of the size of, excuse me, because of the size of the area he is developing. This is old Judge Cooky land that he had. How the B3 or B whatever got there, Judge Cooky can't even tell you that. It just happened. I've asked him several times about it, and so we have business area there. So typically, splitting buffer would be good. But again, if you go back to the way this area was developed, the way this area was brought into the, to the county, or to the city as the donut hole, when we had the future landmass usage there, it was to stay residential, stay single-family residential, not dense, but like it was, to match what we have, to match what we had for future, to match what we have on that whole area, even behind us, back by the bus barn and all. It's, you know, single-family housing, and it's not dense area. The only dense area that you're going to have is way over there, well, Yow Ranch, where he started, and way, way on the other side, by the highway where they started houses. Yow Ranch is a disaster area. Look at our fires that we had in California. Yow Ranch, you could pretty much literally, on a good day, jump from house to house to house if you really wanted to. What is a fire going to do? It's going to do the exact same thing. You're wanting to put 150, whatever houses over there, even townhouses, that fire is going to get out of control. It's going to go somewhere. And it's going to go to the next house, and the next house, and the next house. That land and plot area is not very big. I mean, probably maybe 20, 30 houses. I'm not against growth, okay? We all been out there forever. We know it's going to grow. We know the cow are going to leave at one time. We don't want that. You know, it's nice to have that there. It's nice to have that green space. But that's typical. But now, you're going to destroy it, put multiple housing on there. If you go with a less dense area, you're going to solve the problem with your fires. You're also going to solve the problem with flooding that you're going to have, because that land slopes. And it's going to slope right down into Prosser's new properties that he's going to develop. And that's going to be flooding that's right on top of him. If you put dense housing there, and there's no more place to water to go. So again, look at what you've got here. Look at what the citizens have asked. We've got a petition to say deny this from the very beginning. I'm also wanting to speak on behalf of my neighbor, who isn't sick. He wasn't able to get here. He's against it also. Not only is he against it just because of the change of it, but it's also got to add tons of extra traffic on there. He was a truck driver and had to retire because of some medical conditions, but every time that he would bring his trucks in over there, he would have problems, even on the five-lane road that Stagecoach is, problems pulling in and backing up, because the courtesy of people just running through, he actually had more courtesy from the police department helping stop traffic as he was able to back up in there. That road on days is crazy. And how people drive up and down there like it is with the potholes, I don't understand it. But again, this area was zoned into the district as a donut hole, as a less dense area. It needs to stay that area. Preserve what we have. Preserve the areas that are nice and clean, that we love and we need. You know, we don't have anything area that's like this anymore. You're fixing to just tear it up with all dense housing, and what do you got? People are going to move elsewhere because they don't want that.
Thank you, Mr. Retz. Michael Fornino.
I generally advocate for the citizen when I come up here, not myself. I don't have any course to do business with the city. And when it comes to the donut hole folks, for years, I've listened to these folks, ever since they've been associated with Colleen. I'll put it this way, there were one, I don't remember if it was a gentleman, it was just here before me. He very simply and eloquently put it, the donut hole bought into Colleen, and all they got was a garbage can out of it. Every time these folks come up here and they have a complaint, they're ignored, they're pushed aside. At what point will this council consider their thoughts, their feelings, their experience, their day-to-day rhythm where they live? Time and time again. It's almost, for that section especially, for the people despite the people. We don't care what you want. For years, I've been watching this. So take into consideration the people who live there, how it will affect them, how the decisions made, and the decisions that have been failed, or the decisions that were not made in a positive manner toward them. I mean, time after time, year after year, council iteration after council iteration, these folks just keep getting the shaft. I mean, I don't know any other way to put it. So listen to them. You represent them. Take their considerations into your consideration. Because I just, time and time again, I can't, I can't put, find enough point on it where they come up here, and if I lived over there and had to put up with this all the time, I think the word would be exasperated. I mean, what are they getting for what they're putting in? They're paying taxes. They're part of all this. And as the lady who spoke previous to that, it's going to stretch our city resources. That's a topic that I've been on for 10 years. We do not have enough police. We do not have enough firefighters. We do not have enough solid waste workers and equipment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I know a lot of you are very religious, but you can't take personnel like what Chief Lopez and Chief Kobinski have. They are not the loaves and the fishes. You can only do so much with what you've got. So slow it down. I've said that for years. But all I'm saying is, listen to the people who actually live there and are actually affected, and what it's going to do to them, and their considerations, and their observations.
Thank you. Melissa Brough.
I don't know if the council received the petition that was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission by one of the residents. He went around and talked to each of the neighbors that would be affected directly by the zoning change, that I believe has over 30 signatures on it at this point. But that is something that exists. And there were a lot of individuals who live in the donut hole who did come out to oppose this in person. There are a lot of issues with individuals not knowing, getting their notice and time to return it, for it to be on the presentation that is done prior to planning and zoning most of the time. And so there's a lot more opposition than what gets publicly put out at the council meetings. But again, I will say, you can go to the city's website, where you can watch replays of the city council meetings, and you can watch the planning and zoning meeting there to actually hear what the citizens have to say in their own words. Some of the most common concerns we get in the donut hole are traffic, drainage, lack of sidewalks, lack of curb and gutters. Mr. Boyd, you should be concerned with the lack of green space and parks. But again, it's not District 4, so I don't think you really mind. Let's start with safety. The higher traffic levels trying to enter and exit onto Turkey Trot and Wells Fargo, that are two-lane county roads, that are already going to see an influx of traffic from prior zoning amendments, have a cumulative effect. So when you have all of this housing, all of these multifamily, and when you talk about the multifamily, you're talking about even more cars in a more densely packed area. Allegedly, Stagecoach construction is going to be starting soon. So that'll drive traffic out of this area, down Turkey Trot to Tremere, because people will be trying to avoid Stagecoach. I don't know if you've ever tried to make that corner at Turkey Trot and Tremere, but that is a very sharp angle. If you don't hit it just right, you can't see oncoming traffic, whether you're turning onto or off of it. You're creating a safety hazard. Again, as the previous speaker said, you need to think about the character of the neighborhood. This is mostly single-family, rural, and large lots. This is not a densely populated area. This isn't even an area that has a bunch of garden homes, so you're just amping it up a little bit. Part of mixed residential, just so you know, does include leaving larger lots, and does include leaving AR1. This is still in a controlled growth area, and while that doesn't mean no growth, it does mean slow, controlled growth. What you're doing right now is uncontrolled growth and urban sprawl into rural areas. LU3 is to encourage incremental growth, but there is nothing incremental about this. This is going to put increased traffic that will break down those county roads even faster, meaning we're going to pay more to maintain them in the short and the long run. And then let's not forget that there are flooding and drainage issues. And according to the city's own drainage and design manual, the only thing that they have to engineer is stormwater detention that will hold up to a 25-year frequency storm, not 100-year storm, a 25-year storm. That would be on page 16 of that manual, just in case you need to know. And that's 1.2.8. This is not good for the area. Don't fill the donut hole.
Thank you. Sean Price.
I won't use all my time. I've just got a basic question about the development. So, you know, because I got a statement, you know. Growth, another meaning for growth is cancer, right? We don't need to do, and cancer is something that means it grows out of control, right? Or way too fast. The mayor has repeatedly said this a thousand times. I can't even count, right, the number of times she's said this, is that every neighborhood that we're going to ever build in this city from now on is going to be an HOA. So that's my question. Is this an HOA that's being developed? That's my main question, right? And is it going to be because these are, they're, you know, major roads out there? Are we going to put concrete walls up and turn it into a cell block, right? So those are the questions I have about it, because I drive, I live off of Tremere, but I just lived right up the street from Tremere, from here on Tremere, not all the way down, on Turkey Trot. But I do go out that way, or used to, when the business park was still open, but since it's not, you know, don't go down that way no more. But I just have, you know, those are my questions for it. And like I said, growth, and for growth's sake, is still just, you know, the other definition of that is cancer. So I think we need to pay attention to actually how the growth is taking place. Slow, incremental, but, you know, really, why? Why do we have to have this? And is it going to be an HOA? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Prosser.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm not here to speak in favor or against it. I'm here to speak about a different issue. And the issue I have is, how can the staff recommend disapproval of my adjoining property and then recommend approval of this one? That doesn't make any sense to me. And I'm not finished with that, because it's very frustrating. I heard, consistent with the area, I meant the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, just like this one does. I meant the future land use plan, just like this one does. I'm in a primary use under the future land use plan, just like this proposed one is. But yet, they can come up here and recommend disapproval of mine and approval of the adjoining property. I brought y'all a chart. I've got 104-foot across the road for this consistent area we're talking about. The new one has 1,500-foot. Yet I hear nothing about consistency. If you're going to talk about consistency, it's the same argument for both pieces of property. It's that simple. It's either a good, bad, or ugly argument for the same pieces of property. And that's where I feel like it's personal, because you cannot argue, one, and then not even breathe a word about the next adjoining property. And this property, I hear the comments, and I think y'all all know, as far as the flooding and all the stuff we hear, there would be a licensed engineer that would design a detention pond. And I think Mr. Zager was out here. He might be gone now. But we designed to y'all's criteria, 25-year, they were right about that, not the 100. But I'm not sure that we don't have extra for the 100. I'd have to ask, I should know, because I do it, but I don't know that question. question. But this is a 50-year-old subdivision that we're comparing ourselves to. Well, there's going to be change, and it's uncomfortable. I understand their position very well, and I don't argue their position. But, it's going to be, we're not building things like we did 50 years ago. Whether it's water lines, sewer lines, houses, apartments, nothing. It all changes. So change comes, and change is uncomfortable. I get that. But, they meet all your criteria, but my big question, and I, I would like to hear the answer from Ms. Messer, is how can you stand here and deny one, and approve the other, and you hang your hat on, he's not consistent with the area. But yet, the other property, we don't hear nothing about not being consistent. These are things that have to change. I don't care what y'all apply to me, I want you to apply it equally to everybody. And that, all I'm saying is, it's very hard, even people that I know, it's like, they don't understand it either. So how do you apply it unequal? And when you get it applied unequal, there has to be some discussion with not being applied equally. That's all I said the last time, month and a half ago. I say it again today. How do you, how can you deny one and recommend approval of the next one that's right in the same area, without using the same argument? They're adjoining properties. There's no defending that. And, I'll tell you my answer for that is, you just got to stand up and say, you know what, we made a mistake. We shouldn't have done that. You just own it. That's easy enough. It was a mistake. Or maybe it wasn't a mistake. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to close public hearing. Need a motion, second, and a vote to consider the ordinance. Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I actually have a question for staff.
Yes, sir.
Just like to understand the staff's approval, as well as the P&amp;Z's approval, or recommendation, rather, of approval for this particular case.
Sure. So, first, if I can, I'd like to address Mr. Perser's question.
Sure.
There are several distinctions between the recommendation that staff made on this item versus the staff, the staff recommendation on Mr. Perser's request for duplexes off of Turkey Trot. The first is the zoning district itself. So, in this case, the request is for townhomes, which are considered single-family attached, meaning that a single, a, a townhome is a single-family zoning designation, but it's attached. In other words, that, it, it, townhomes are typically owner-occupied, not always. Anything can be rental, right? But, they're typically owner-occupied. They are considered a single-family zoning designation, whereas Mr. Perser's request for R2 is for duplexes, two-family homes. The second distinction between this request and, and the former, is the frontage on Stagecoach. So this property, the, the piece of property, if we could bring the aerial back up, possibly, has frontage on Stagecoach. Whereas, Mr. Perser's request for duplexes had frontage on Turkey Trot and, and Wells Fargo. There we go. Come on. There we go. So you can see here, the area of the requested RT1, which again is a single-family, attached, single-family zoning designation, has frontage on Stagecoach, and also, this area here is commercially zoned, it's B3. So this property that's requested for townhomes is immediately adjacent to existing commercial zoning. Whereas, the property that Mr. Perser was requesting duplexes for is not adjacent to existing commercial. So, it's very common to use multifamily zoning as a buffer between single-family and commercial.
Right.
So in this case, staff felt that it made sense to allow RT1, which again is a single-family zoning designation, not a multifamily designation, but it is higher density, as a buffer between the commercial and the R1. For this property up here, that's not the case. So again, this has, it has frontage on Stagecoach. This is off of Wells Fargo. It's, it's much further north. The character there is a little more rural. Stagecoach is, as you know, a much more highly-traveled roadway. So those are, those are the primary distinctions between this request and the other.
Thank you. Can you speak quickly to the, not quickly, I'm sorry, speak to the Planning and Zoning's recommendation for approval?
Sure. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission, let me pull that back up. The vote was three to two, with Commissioners Plakelman and Sabree voting in opposition to the motion. Commissioner Sabree expressed that she would support R1 lots, but did not support the RT1 component of this request. And Commissioner Plakelman expressed opposition to the proposed density, and concerned about the amount of opposition to the request.
Okay. Can you go to the slide which shows the notification area, I believe? That might have, that one. Okay, so we've got B3 on that southeast corner, R1 right behind it, currently agricultural, is that correct? Or is that R1 as well, the centerpiece?
The centerpiece? This, right here?
No, the lot within the, yeah, it's hard to point out from here.
This?
The one just below it.
This?
Mm-hmm.
Is our, that's proposed R1. It's currently ag. That's the proposed R1. So the applicant's request is everything that's outlined in blue, with this area here being the RT1 section, and this area here being the proposed R1. So again, it's a request to rezone from ag to R1.
Got it. And there's established B3 commercial on that corner already.
Yes, sir.
So, this B3 is already going to, however that's activated, whoever that user will be is going to activate a change in this area, right? And I do understand the approach for the buffer in between the townhomes, and not necessarily duplexes. I used to serve on P&amp;Z with some of these gentlemen here, so I get it. All I can say is, that commercial alone is going to change this area. So, that's all I have right now, is I still consider this one. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thanks, Madam Protem. My question is, I'm looking at what was already approved, and then this is coming before us, and my concern, is this, does this require impact analysis?
I don't believe so. I don't think it meets the threshold for a TIA.
Okay. You know, so then, and I hear some of the concerns given to me with the density and the road network. So the developers are either or not going to be required to input. That, I know that the road's going to have to be redone sooner than later.
So, for each development, we look at the impact of the, the singular development by itself. We can't, unfortunately, in this case, there are several developments that are occurring
Right.
at the same time, but because they're each, their own development with their own developer, we can't look at them
Yeah, contract.
collectively. So, not, none of the individual developments trigger
Right, and I remember for the first one.
the TIA requirement. And so, in this case, there's, there is no requirement for a TIA out here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Segarra?
Thank you. I, I just had a question. When you mentioned the townhouses, what is the definition of a townhouse? And before you ask that, the reason I'm asking this is because I've seen some duplexes, that they try to sell them as townhouses. If you look in the Realtor, and it's like, one duplex, and they side, sell one side and another side, and when you pull them up, they're in there as townhouses. So what is a townhouse?
So that's a great question. According to our zoning ordinance, the RT1 zoning designation allows for, again, attached, single-family, it's essentially zero lot line on both sides. They're attached in groupings of five. I think it's, it's, is it three to five, or five or more? It's, it's at least, it has to be more than two. So, it's essentially at groupings of more than two. In cases where we've approved, or the council has approved, quote-unquote, "townhomes" that are essentially two units attached, those have been done via PUD, because we don't have a zoning designation that allows for that.
Yeah.
So, a little while back, there was a, a development on, on, I think it was Dogwood, that was done via PUD. And the reason for that is that they were essentially building duplexes with a property line down the middle in order to be able to sell them individually. But the RT1 designation doesn't allow for that, so that's why it was done via PUD.
So, these townhouses, you got to have at least three units in one building. Is that how that works?
Three or, three or more, I'm looking at, Holly.
And each unit is sold separately?
That's correct. Yep.
Yeah, so they're not buying the whole thing. It's just...
They're pla, individually-plotted lots
Can you do like a...
with zero side setback, essentially.
You know, we have fourplexes. Can you do a fourplex and turn it into a townhouse?
I can't remember off the top of my head.
Throw a little curveball there, but if you, that's more than three there.
Yeah, for sure.
You can think about that. The definition of townhouse means one, single-family dwelling unit within a group of three or more dwelling units, in which each dwelling unit extends from foundation to roof, and with open space on at least two sides attached to another dwelling unit on at least one side. So, foundation to roof.
So it's got to be from the foundation. So like a duplex, they do like, two downstairs and two upstairs. So that wouldn't be considered, because the units upstairs don't go to the foundation, is that's what I'm...
So a townhouse by definition is, it's a pla, it's an individually-plotted lot. So, it can't be one unit above another. That could be done in a, in a condominium regime or something like that, but it's, per RT1, it's, it's...
It's got to be up. And, and with that said, there are fourplexes like that, that, you know, they got an upstairs, downstairs, and there's four units there. So technically...
So theoretically, you could have, you could have four units that are attached, as long as each unit is on its own.
Is on its own, yeah. So technically, you can do a fourplex and sell each unit as a townhouse.
Yes.
I think that's what I'm getting at, so. But, how much time do I got? I hope I got a little bit more time here. But, I wanted to see if, you know, the residents came up, and they mentioned a couple of things, and I wanted to see if we can address that. You know, one of them, I think you did, we don't need a traffic analysis, because the number one thing they said is, it creates more traffic. And we hear that on every subdivision that comes before us. So, everyone that comes up here, it's traffic, it's safety, it's, we would not have grow anymore, because, you know, I always tell citizens, it's admirable, and I respect them coming up here, but, you know, we have to go with private property. I think above all that is the rights, private property rights. And I think that's more important. A lot of people come here and talk about freedom, and so, but then they forget, that extends to the right of a property that you own and you're investing in. And so, as long as you meet the requirements, as long as you meet the, everything that the city requires. If you don't, then we're going to say no. But if you come, and you come before the planning and zoning, and you do the requirement, and then you come here and up here, it's, we, a lot of times, you know, it's hard for us, because we, we sympathize with the residents, and it's like, you know what, we don't want a lot of areas to disappear either. You know, I was heartbroken when, when Yow Ranch went into development ago. I thought that was going to be forever. But I understand, it's somebody's private property that they sold, and they have the right to do whatever they want, as long as they meet the requirements of everything. But, with that, traffic, drainage, did we address drainage already? Can you, can you talk about that?
So this, this is straight zoning. So the, the request tonight is just for the land use. The drainage will be addressed during the plating phase.
Later time, okay. And, and the, and one question was HOA. I don't know if you can address that here or not?
Yes, sir. So, any new subdivision is required to have an HOA in order to maintain the common, common amenities, the, the drainage, any subdivision perimeter walls, that sort of thing. So, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boyd?
I'll let the next councilmember speak. I'm still thinking on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Question, not a question. Statement was made about planning. I understand the planning process and where it goes, but can you explain for the record so residents understand? You already addressed that this is two separate cases, and I think there's always a misnomer. People think that as soon as we approve it, building starts right away, and I may have asked this before, but I think it might be important, the residents know and understand that part. If you can do it the best, the most common speak possible.
Sure. So typically, in the development process, zoning is the first phase of the development process. Zoning, as you know, is discretionary, which means that the council has some latitude to approve or disapprove a request. If the zoning is approved, there are certain uses that are allowed by right under any given zoning designation. So, for example, in this case, if the request for R1 is approved, and the RT1 is approved, each of those zoning designations allows single-family and townhomes respectively by right. Once the zoning has been approved, the applicant can come forward with a subdivision plat. A subdivision plat is not discretionary. If it meets all of the city's requirements, all of the regulations in our subdivision regulations, Chapter 26, it must be approved. So, that process, as you know, was changed about a year ago, from being a Planning and Zoning Commission process to being a staff approval process, with, with the understanding that it's not discretionary, that if it meets the requirements, it must be approved. So, if, if council votes to approve the zoning change requests, and they come back with a plat, as long as it meets our requirements for lot size, and street width, and street spacing, and, and those types of, of development regulations, it'll, it'll be approved.
And you brought up, that's, and so, in the zoning process, as we look to look to do this, and I know I asked a question about the TIA, but the connecting, is there any requirement for developers to adjust the road where it's connected?
So during the plating process, that's one of the things that we look at, is, is intersection spacing, right-of-way width, block length. So, all of those things dictate where, where the streets go, and how far apart they are, and where the intersections go. But again, if, if a plat is submitted that meets the minimum requirements, we're obligated to approve it.
And, and I know this has been asked before in other developments, when do, when would you, when could you expect, or do you know when the, that next step will begin? And even then, the projected bills, because I know permits have to be submitted, and...
It varies from one development to another. In this case, it's, it's reasonably small, so I would expect a plat to be submitted. It's probably a better question for the applicant, but fairly soon.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd?
Well, we've been discussing this for a little while now, and this council has to vote, has to make a public decision on this particular case. I've been thinking through everything, and considering the commercial in that corner, the private property statement that was made by Councilman Segarra, the city making a recommendation, P&amp;Z making a recommendation, there's, there being a proposed buffer of townhomes, which by the way is middle housing, which we do not have, I make a motion to approve PH-25-019.
We have a motion on the floor to approve PH-25-019, made by Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Segarra?
I second that.
Second by Councilmember Segarra. All in favor, please vote yes. Any opposed, please vote no. All right, we have four in support, and one vote abstain opposition. Madam Secretary?
PH-25-020. Hold a public hearing and consider a city-initiated request, case number Z-2507, to rezone approximately .51 acres, being part of Lot 1, Block 1, out of the Bay subdivision from B5 Business District to R3A Multifamily Apartment Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 1301 Harris Avenue, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning approximately .51 acres being part of Lot 1, Block 1, out of the Bay subdivision from B5 Business District to R3A Multifamily Apartment Residential District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Counsel, Ms. Messer has gone over this presentation, and we get to go. Do we need another? Thank you. We're going to open public hearing. Public hearing is open. Mr. Sean Price? Mr. Sean Price.
I'm sorry.
This is PH-25-20. 25-020, sir.
Okay. That's, that's what I thought, 020. Just, just making sure. So again, I got the same question with this one as I had with the other one. This one's going to be, or is this, this is, may have this, this is only one lot out of everything out there. This is not being a development. So this is an existed development that's not an HOA at the current time. And that was my basic question is that this, since it is a business district and it's, I'm really confused by this one because this is a city-initiated correction to the zoning that we're doing here, right? Which is awesome that we're actually fixing problems as a city, you know what I mean? So to come in the city to get forward and take care of issues that are out there that we see that's going on with zoning processes. But, so I got my notes a little mixed up over here with the 021, so I apologize with my confusion on this. Is that when this happens, right, with the current neighborhood that it sits in, will this enact it since we have this clause, right, that everything has to become an HOA? Will this initiate that neighborhood to become an HOA? And will the concrete walls be initiated for the theraflu roads? Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Alvarez.
Wanted to attempt to answer your question, Mr. Price. During the presentation, it was shown that this is currently an apartment complex on its one lot, one block apartment complex, but it's, for some reason, at some time ago, it was zoned commercial. So the city is changing the zoning to match the structure that is there, which is an apartment complex, so changing the zoning from commercial to an apartment complex zoning. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Segarra?
I move to approve PH-25-020.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Segarra. Councilmember Adams?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I move to, I second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve PH-25-020. All in favor to consider the ordinance and support, vote yes. And opposition, vote no. It looks like we have four in support and one, Nina Cobb, in opposition. Madam Secretary?
Hold a public hearing and consider a city-initiated request, case number Z2508, to rezone 10 properties being part of Lot 48 and all of Lots 49 through 51, Block 3, out of the Freedom Valley Edition, and Lots 6 through 11, Block 4, out of the Freedom Valley replat from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject properties are locally addressed as 1102, 1104, 1106, 1216, 1218, 1220, 1231, 1233, 1235, and 1237, Liberty Bell Loop, Colleen, Texas. Caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of part of Lot 48 and all of the Lots 49 through 51, Block 3, out of the Freedom Valley Edition, and Lots 6 through 11, Block 4, out of the Freedom Valley replat from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Counsel, Ms. Messher has presented this before. Do we need to have a repeat? Thank you. We're going to open public hearing. Public hearing is open. Mr. Sean Price.
Since you didn't answer my question as, to what I, what I asked the last time, I realize that was a, I know that that other property was what it was, right? But I'm talking about, does this initiate these actions, right, by the city, since we said that any and all neighborhoods that are coming now will all be HOA, right? Automatically, given. Will this initiate this neighborhood, or this area, or these houses into an HOA? Simply yes or no? That's all I was looking for. And then the other thing is, is that that was already answered to me, was the tax question to it. Did this affect their taxes in any way, shape, or form that would come over there? And I got the answer that it was no. So I was just, I was curious about this because it was adamant by the mayor that all new housing situation, right, given to the city, and this would be essentially that since the city initiated it, right, that everything's going to be an HOA. And of course, I got issues with HOA. I think that it's communistic. I think that it's fascistic because y'all end up giving me the arbiters of any, any mitigating circumstances for arbiters in legal situations at HOAs. It comes to y'all eventually in the end if there's discrepancies. So I'm no concerned with that. That's the way it's written in the HOA bylaws. So I'm just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Adams?
I want to first address the comment. We started this because residents who could not get loans for their properties because they were trying to sell it were forced to get them zoned. And because it was something the city did, we're fixing it so they're not charged, so they can proceed with what they can do. And the HOA is for new developments, not infill or stuff that's already in existence. Because that would be putting the residents, again, in a precarious situation if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, the distinction, the requirement for homeowners association is triggered by residential subdivision. This is a zoning action. So we're in two different...
Thanks. So with that, I move to approve, sorry, PH...
Yes, ma'am.
With that, I move to approve PH-25-20, if I'm about to read it wrong.
021. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Adams to approve PH, that's fine. PH-25-021. Councilmember Solomon?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We need a vote to consider this ordinance. All in favor, vote yes. Any opposed, vote no. It looks like we have six in favor of PH-25-021. Madam Secretary?
Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance renaming Bunny Trail to AL Davis Trail. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance changing the name of Bunny Trail in the City of Colleen, Bell County, Texas, from Bunny Trail to AL Davis Trail, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Public hearing. We've already received presentation on this one. Do we need any additional information from Ms. Messher? Thank you. Public hearing is open. Michael Frinino.
Renaming public streets for exceptional service. And note your calendars, mark the date and time. Mr. Segarra, last meeting was touching on this. Whereas, Mr. Boyd will say that I'm in some way demeaning Sergeant Major Davis. In no way. Was he a popular guy? Yes. Was he liked? Yes. But I'm sorry, but waving at people is not exceptional service. We'll get to the root of his reasons in a moment. Streets named after people for exceptional service. Martin Luther King, a man who changed the country and indeed the world. Very noteworthy. Robert Gray, Army Airfield. For those of you who just know the Doolittle Raid, go, go back and watch a movie called 30 Seconds Over Tokyo, and that'll kind of give you an idea of why that airfield is named after him. Any of you know who Lafayette Poole was? They made a movie about him, well, based on him, called Fury. Brad Pitt played him in the movie. There's nothing named after him. What about Jackie Robinson? Hey? He changed the world of sports, color barrier, everything else. He had a very unfortunate and early racial segregation issue while he was here at Fort Hood, when he was with the 761st. Nothing named after him. Yet we have a street named after a paid lobbyist who is still alive and in this room tonight. The concern about cheapening this, I would suggest constructively, he was a local curiosity, compare him with Elizabeth Laird, the hug lady who hugged estimated half million soldiers. Personal contact. People knew her. We named nothing after her, but the Army, on their side of the airfield, named a room after her in comparison. Woman who touched, literally touched, half a million lives. Perhaps associate something with his activity, what he was known for. Got running trails, we're all about plaques around here. Put his picture, short bio, who he was, and how he was a positive influence. But that is not, that is not in any way approaching the line of exceptional service. Period. The root of this is more to Mr. Boyd's vanity, and it has nothing to do with Sergeant Major Davis. I mean, unfortunately, in five years' time, most people who live in the area won't remember who he is with the turnover that we have around here. Most, I'm not saying all, but most. It's, it's a vanity project, and it's more for Mr. Boyd's glory and his hopeful political future, which we'll just leave it at that.
Point of order.
I'm speaking, sir. You do not get to use point of order on a citizen at the lecture.
It's okay. Mr. Frinino, please, go ahead, sir.
You spurn it so much, maybe if you wore men's underwear for a G.
Mr. Frinino, let's stay focused, please, on the agenda item. Thank you.
Okay, when it comes to exceptional service, something of note, that's what you recognize for. We have plenty of people, okay? I don't speak on race. I really don't. I don't care about race. But if Mr. Boyd, you know, wants to recognize, there are plenty of people of note who happen to be black that we could name it after. I mean, he's not even naming, he's not even proposing to name a road that he's associated with. He's trying to cover his tracks for his failed championing of Bunny Trail. You do not get to say that, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
And this man, attend.
Call to order, Mr. Frinino. That's a final warning, Mr. Frinino. Please remove yourself from the chambers, please. Please remove yourself from the chambers.
Every week, broken ass out of the chamber.
Let's keep it down. Thank you, sir.
That broken racist right there. Fuck you!
Sir, please, let's make sure we maintain decorum. Officers, please, let's remove him from the d, chambers, please. Can we please remove him from the chambers, please? Thank you.
Should be tired of his broken ass.
Apologize for the community outburst. Thank you, please. Remove him from the chambers. Thank you. This is unbecoming. As we approach the dais, let's please try to remember that we have people watching at home, children watching for civics projects. Let's please try to maintain decorum and control our outburst. Mr. Sean Price? Mr. Sean Price?
Are we on the last one?
This is for zero, PH-25-022. Let's, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. Good evening. Sorry, I just had a couple teeth removed, so I sound a little funny, right? I'm again, same questions, right? I had the same thing, but the, it's already been answered on the outside here, but will we also rename the parks? Because we do have the Bunny Trail Park out there that's named for the road Bunny Trail, or for the name of the neighborhood Bunny Trail. Right? So, and I'm just wondering, what else, other than running, was a sacrifice? What's the justification? Other than it was a sergeant major? So I don't have the full story, right? And I just want to kind of understand, understand the process as a minority of Colleen, right? So I want to kind of understand what we're going through with. Because I don't see anybody else getting, getting this special treatment, right? And just because you were sergeant major in the Army doesn't mean you get special treatment. There are thousands, hundreds of thousands of sergeant majors all over the country, right? Why this one particular one? Right? Other than being the running guy? I know this guy, saw him on I-95 plenty of times, running up and down. Wave at me, okay, cool. But is that the, is that the reason why he's getting a road named after him? I don't know. So, just, just wondering. We got a few Medal of Honor winners, right? One just re-enlisted into the Army. Maybe we can put his name on there. Just saying. Just a thought. Just wondering what the justification process was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Melissa Brown?
Stop me when I say a name that you think has not contributed greatly to the City of Colleen. Rosa Herford. Tim Hancock. Raoul Villaronga. Bishop Holcomb. General Schumaker. Given that none of you stopped me, I'm going to go out on a limb and say that you all agree that each of those individuals made a significant impact directly onto the City of Colleen. We've talked about renaming roads before. Actually, we talked about renaming one after Rosa Herford. It was suggested that it would be a better honor to her to rename the community center, the Rosa Herford Community Center, because that's where she dedicated a lot of her time. It was discussed renaming Cunningham Road. And it was discussed that it would be unfair to everybody who lives along Cunningham to do that, the expense that would be included, and that it would be a better and equal fitting honor to put Cunningham Road and underneath it, it says the Bishop Holcomb Memorial Road. Fort Hood Street has been discussed a lot as to whether or not that should be renamed. And ultimately, this council decided, no, it should not leave the name the way it is. So I'm going to say to the majority of this council, is that if Mr. Boyd is so adamant that they should, they should do the same thing, that we should rename this road, he should pay for the road signs that say Bunny Trail and then AL Davis Memorial Trail, just like Christian House of Prayer did. This is his initiative. This isn't something citizens came up here and asked for. This isn't something Sergeant Major Davis's family came up here and requested. This was an initiative brought forward by a council member, and not once has a council member initiated a request that didn't come from a member of the public, gone through to change the name of even so much as a part of a building, much less an entire road that is going to affect people. I never met Sergeant Major Davis, and in 14 years that I lived here while he was still alive, I never once saw him running. But by all accounts, Sergeant Major Davis was a great person, not the kind of person who I think would want his name memorialized in controversy. Saturday should have been assigned to everyone sitting in front of me, that just because you think it's a good idea, doesn't mean the citizens want it crammed down our throats. You may be able to sit up there and finish out two full terms, but it's marred with controversy. Just like the renaming of this road.
One moment. Thank you. Let's, can we stop our time, please? Let's, can we stop our talk, please? Thank you. Councilmember Boyd?
Yes, we need to focus on the agenda item, addressing the agenda items specifically.
I feel like she was on the agenda, let's go ahead, continue on, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Anyway, I'm sure you'll hear this from other speakers who follow me, I know it was brought up by prior speakers, it would be a better honor to Sergeant Major Davis to name a trail after him where people would be running, because that's what he did, he was known for running. People will still smile and wave at you when you're running on a trail. Actually, you know, it's not really safe to be running on a road, so we don't want it to become known as a running road, right? There are no bike trails there, there are no pedestrian areas, there's a sidewalk, but that's a, especially right now, I don't think that's what we want, is people running through there. You're looking at expense for people, and in the day and age when everybody gets everything delivered, how long is it going to take for GPS to get updated, so deliveries can get to individuals with a Bunny Trail address, where they have to go down A.L. Davis Trail in order to get a delivery made? Honor him the way he should be honored, not marred in controversy.
Thank you. Mr. Jim Wright?
I tell you what, every time I come to a council meeting, I get to hear three people that are against anything that comes up, and I think you know the three I'm talking about. I own the property at 5,200, yeah, what's the name of the street?
Bunny Trail.
Bunny. Bunny Trail, I'm sorry, I went blank. There's a military dependent care facility at 5,200 Bunny Trail. I got a call from the manager, or the, one of the people, staff there that's in charge, and said, is this really going to happen? And I said, I hope to hell not. The cost of replacing signage, the, not just the signage, if, i.e., let's just take the military dependent facility, they have all kinds of documents that are, have the address on them. That's a cost, it's a waste of money. There is a, I understand there's going to be new parks, name a park after him. I mean, I saw the guy hunt, running many, many times, I admired it. I didn't know the man specifically, but I don't think a road needs to be named after him, when you're gonna, if you've got a new road and you want to name it, fine, no problem. But to, to the cost, not just to the city, but to every person who has an address of 50 in Bunny Trail, it'll cost them money. And things are expensive enough without doing things that aren't required and are, I'm sorry, but stupid to do. I just don't agree with it. I think the majority of the people that are here tonight, that are going to speak on it, I haven't found one yet that agrees with it, that it should be done. I have no problem in naming a road or anything that's not already named after somebody that you appreciate, admire, et cetera, and I admired the guy. I don't have the stamina or the willpower to run miles every day, and I'm, you know, I'm 81 years old, and I've never been a runner, and I never will be, but I admire the guy, and I don't give it him what, pardon my French, I don't give it, I don't care what color he is, if he's black, white, yellow, or purple. I admired the guy, and I think he was admired by a lot of people about what he did, and he was always the friendliest guy, and you wave at, et cetera, but I don't think a road needs to be named after him, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Donna Craven?
We write to you as a collective group, I have 74 names signed on a petition, plus 33 on change.org, that are opposing the name of Bunny Trail being changed, not to be in who it's changed to, but just being changed in general, period. As citizens and stakeholders of our community regarding the proposed renaming of A.L. Davis, while I recognize the importance of honoring individuals who have made meaningful contributions to our city, we must respectfully oppose the change on both practical and ethical grounds. First and foremost, the remaining of an established street such as Bunny Trail presents a significant administrative and financial burden for every resident, business, and place of worship along its route. For individuals, this change means updating driver's license vehicle registrations, voter registration cards, et cetera, et cetera, each of which carries its own cost, wait time, and complication. For businesses and churches, the impact is even greater. Signage branding materials, websites, business license, IRS registrations, delivery logistics, correspondence, all must be altered, some at a considerable cost, not to mention the potential confusion and loss of traffic or donations due to address discrepancies. These changes are not merely inconvenient, they are expensive and time-consuming. To draw a relatable analogy, imagine losing your wallet, the process of canceling and replacing every card, piece of identification, it can be frustrating and time-consuming. Now imagine being told to go through this ordeal not due to any fault of your own, but simply to satisfy a symbolic gesture that offers no tangible benefit to those directly affected. Worse still, the proposal has an unfortunate appearance of using the good name of Mr. Davis not to honor his legacy, but to boost the personal legacies of those making the decision. It is deeply troubling to think that a city council would place its own accolades above the well-being of its constituents, many of whom are elderly retired or living on fixed incomes. For these individuals, this change would be a bureaucratic scam, siphoning money, siphoning time, money, and peace of mind under the guise of civic pride. Honoring Mr. Davis deserves thoughtful planning, transparency, and broad community support, not a rushed decision that imposes real costs on real people. There are numerous more effective ways, and less disruptive ways, to preserve his memory, such as a park, monument, new road, each alternative would celebrate his life without punishing those who have no say in the matter. In closing, I urge the council to reconsider this proposal in favor of a more equitable and inclusive means of honoring Mr. Davis. Renaming Bunny Trail is not only impartial, or impractical and financially irresponsible, it risks undermining the very ideals of public service and integrity that Mr. Davis himself likely stood for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Leader?
I'm 65 year, I will be 65 years old the 1st of January. I work for Colleen ISD. I'm a custodian. I'm the lower end page of the KISD. I don't have retirement. I don't have a savings account. I live paycheck to paycheck. I cannot retire until I'm 75. I'm already looking at the end of the month with a knee replacement. The next month, I have to, doom, I'm going to have to have my other knee replaced. All of that, right there, costs me half a paycheck or better, just for my co-pays. I cannot afford to go through and change my house, the street on my house. I can't do it to my credit cards, my driver's license, or anything else. That's money I can't afford to spend. That's money I can spend on a week's worth of groceries. Or medicine I can spend on my medication I need for my blood pressure, swollen legs or whatever. I'm sitting here and I'm watching things go on, and I'm watching certain people roll their eyes, while things are being said about this issue. This is a big issue for some of us. There's a lady in the trailer park on Bunny Trail where I live that eats soup every day because she can't afford food. I've given her hamburger, out of what I have. We share in things, because I've known Wanda for 20 years. But yet, my floors are falling in because the habitats of Bunny Trail have been destroyed. There used to be rabbits, raccoons, fox, all sorts of stuff running around down there on Bunny Trail, before it even had two lanes. Now, I, I have music blaring that I can't get the police to take care of, I can't get the police to stop.
Ma'am, I appreciate your sentiment, but we need to stay on the naming of the street, if you don't mind.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. I, I mean, there's a lot more issues that go into this. This man would be better honored if he had a park named after him, with a sign as to what he did. For $46,600, you could fix my floors, instead of ruining the street I live on, any worse than what we already have. Why do you want to put me through that? Why do I have to go through that? Why do any of us have to go through that? My daughter is a Purple Heart veteran from Iraq. I moved here for her, and this is the way I'm going to get done? Mm-mm. Not good, not fair to anybody. And some people can't even look me in the eye, but y'all can, and it stops right there that's looking me in the eye. Mr. Boyd, you're wrong. You're absolutely wrong. And to be that hateful, to tell people that you don't care, is sad.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Tina Rogers?
I need to make a comment. Oh, I sure can't take that back, thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm here for the same topic, and it sounds like everybody's saying the same thing. I'm a 10-year veteran, 24 years' service after that for the Army, I just retired last year. I deal with soldiers on a day-to-day basis. I have the uppermost respect for Mr. Davis and his, his service to his country, because I've been there, done that, three tours in Iraq, two in Afghanistan. Do I want something named after me that's going to cause controversy? Oh, heck no. Do I want to be the center of a big debate in the city of Colleen? Please, thank you not. But I do believe, you guys just did what I think is a great thing, approving those three new subdivisions, housing areas for our people, to have more places to live. That'd be a good place, the streets aren't named yet, you don't affect any residents. The new parks, especially the one on Bunny Trail, doesn't have a name, or if it does have a name, it could be changed, because it won't affect anybody's businesses, it won't affect residents who have to make all those changes to their life. Because I had that feeling when I thought, if they were coming to my street and named my street, what all I'd have to go through? So, I can empathize. And I believe that we should respect him and what he's represented 100%, but I believe there's a better way to do it. So, I'm going to read you this letter that was submitted by the Journey Church. I have served as a pastor of the Journey Church located at 5,300 Bunny Trail for the past 13 years. It's come to my attention that plans are being made to change the name of Bunny Trail. The older leadership of the Journey Church strongly urges you to reconsider their action. Changing the name Bunny Trail will cause the following difficulties for the church. The church must refile with the state for its 501(c)(3) classification with a new address. The Journey Church must pay for new publicity and signage with a new address. We'll have to change all of our online identification, of location for the church. People have identified with our church, with Bunny Trail, for the past 13 years, it'll take time to identify with a different name. We humbly ask that you reconsider changing the name because of the personal costs and difficulty it will cause for our church and others living on Bunny Trail. Dr. Mark Hoover, signature. So, it's a lot of people, and I saw some of the other things where y'all said, well, one person disapproves of it, one person doesn't like it, and I understand one person, but you're talking about over 100 people that don't approve. And all I can say is, I hope you guys take in consideration what the people of the community want, and do the, do the respect for him, and give him, because just naming the street, if you do that park, and you put like a nice memorial there for him, and just say who he was, why is there? Because just naming the street's not going to give it, give him any really notoriety, it's just going to make it hard on the community. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And public hearing is closed. Councilmember Boyd?
Thinking, Madam Mayor, April Tim, and the first thing I need to do is correct a statement that stated that I said I don't care, that's nowhere on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, Cal, I'm sorry.
Is there?
Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, I was going to continue my statement. Well, I'm going to just briefly ask for my time to run concurrently as I go through this. I think it's important that I make the case and qualify the case for consideration with this council. So, first and foremost, we did attempt to rename two terminals at the airport about two years ago after Mr. Hancock and Mr. Schumaker, and that was not successful. Truth is, a renaming of a street or facility is very difficult, and rightfully so, but those who are notable across the United States and cities have streets renamed after them, that's a very common thing. On two prior occasions, I advocated for the renaming of Bunny Trail, and that was on April 1st, when we brought it to the agenda to discuss, and then on April 15th, we determined to have a public hearing, which we're doing today. A former resident of District 4 residing just off Bunny Trail, retired Major Command, retired Command Sergeant Major, rather, Alfonso Davis, was a well-known individual known for his welcoming presence in the community. Specifically, Mr. Davis is best known for running along State Highway 195, offering a friendly wave to every traveler that passed by on the roadway. He did this for several decades in all types of weather, setting a silent example of consistency and respect. Mr. Davis may just be one of the most well-known persons in Colleen's history. Notably, Command Sergeant Major Davis served 30 years in U.S. Army, having served four tours in Vietnam, that's something I would never discount. Bunny Trail currently possesses a generic name. It is midway through its reconstruction process, and for this reason, I find the timing to rename the street to be the most appropriate. I also find it appropriate to maintain the trail designation as it is what citizens are used to, and is synonymous with the running and walking Mr. Davis had done for many years. At the argument of perceived heritage or history that I've heard at some point during the past few weeks, it appears we only have a few lifelong residents that live along the street that would like the name not to change. I've spoken with the heir who explained the name Bunny Trail was simply applied at the time the road was being established, and who has no opposition to the name change. I've spoken directly with the descendants of Mr. Davis, who have already granted permission to rename the street in honor of their father. At the argument to consider a trail and a park after Mr. Davis, because I've considered all of these, he was not a parks person, he was a runner, and watering it down to street, to a street name on a trail is simply not the intent here. The initiative respectfully is to rename a generically named street after a notable person in the community, as is outlined in the city facilities and renaming of city streets policy and guidelines. I would also offer that the road measures two miles from one end to the other, to include running concurrently here, sidewalks, which can be considered a trail, to include photos of QR codes.
Madam Secretary? Thank you.
Thank you. So, we talked about a way to define who he is, even on the trail when it's rebuilt, or the road, we can have QR codes there for people to really know who he is. That's not common in other cities, but we can do that here if people really want to know. Furthermore, at the, at the argument of, you know, folks, a lot of people running in the city, well, there's a lot of pastors as well who preach every Sunday morning in the city, yet it was determined to honorarily name Cunningham after a specific preacher. Why? Because he was well-known, highly regarded, and had a far-reaching impact on the community despite not being a resident of the city like Mr. Davis was. Furthermore, I've responsibly done research on the impact to residences and businesses living along this road. Currently, there are a total of four residential addresses and a mobile home park comprised of roughly 10 to 12 units, who would be required to update their address. It's not necessarily a change of address, because the unit number is not changing, it is the street name. It's my understanding the U.S. Postal Service grants two years to change a street name. There are two businesses, those being the Journey Church and the neighboring West Colleen Medical Home, those are the only two commercial facilities that would have to change an address. The KISD School would not be impacted.
We can't respond, please, just one moment.
Thank you. And that's because if your address faces Bunny Trail, it has And that's because if your address faces Bunny Trail, it has a Bunny Trail address. The other businesses do not, to include the Walmart, the CVS. I've done this research. The KISD School would not be impacted as they both have separate addresses from Bunny Trail. And ultimately, the fire station as a city-owned facility would not be burdened. Now, if this were Tremere Road, WS Young, or Ransier, I would imagine the impact would be massive and proved to be a terrible idea. With the citizen impact being considerably low and relating cost to the city being nominal, I remain in resolve that the remaining initiative is appropriate, responsible, and timely. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, I just had a couple of quick questions for you. With regards to, in general, who can make suggestions, approved or otherwise, of naming streets? That is open to public, open to general recommendation? Is that correct? And can you just kind of just touch on that for us?
The naming policy, is that what you're...
Yes, there was a question. There was a question about why certain people were named and who can make a recommendation about a name change, whether it's council or citizens? Who can do that and what's that general process?
So the naming policy refers to... I mean, there were lots of things that were discussed prior to the naming policy being put into place. The naming policy, I don't have the date in front of me when it was put into place, but it's been a couple, several years now. But before that, there were, I'm seeing two years, but I don't have that in front of me. But under the naming policy right now, what we... What it contemplates is a city-initiated request and a citizen petition. So we are considering this as city-initiated, as a council member brought it, rather than a petition from citizens.
And thank you for that clarity. So the only thing I'm... Just have a statement that I just want to make, and I understand regardless of how you feel on either side of the situation, there's terms that I heard where there's a lot of anger, vitriol, and special treatments, words of special treatment that were thrown around. And I just want to remind everybody that civil discourse is extremely important as we move through this process. And so whether we agree or disagree, I think it's important that we always try to listen to both sides and then make an ultimate determination without allowing that level of emotion to get involved in our decision. Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you. And we've been down this road before. I've kind of made mention of that. You know, we tried to do this to Rosewood, and we got a lot of feedback from our citizens. I don't know if they think we had that many people at that time that lived on Rosewood, but from my perspective, I think that we learned. We learned a lot. And what happened is that the person that we were trying to name, or one of the council members that was trying to name that road with, what happened in the long run, they named the whole school after them. And so, I agree with you guys here. I think it's, there's going to be a lot of things that happen, and there's probably other opportunities to name, not to take away from Mr. Boyd in trying to honor somebody here locally. But I agree that there's a lot to change the names. And originally, that's one of the questions that I had asked Mr. Boyd. I said, I don't think a lot of people live in there at Bunny Trail. And I was surprised to find out there is a lot of addresses on Bunny Trail, because I said, that's going to be the pushback. You know, people that live there are not going to want to change names, you know? We don't want to go through that. And so, but you guys pointed out a lot of things that I did not even think about, you know? Driver's license, I didn't even think about that, you know? Voter registration cards, you know, all the stuff, tax records. I always get this letter in the mail from the IRS from my office, even though I always put the right address, they always say I got the wrong address because I live in a suite. And this goes on for years and years, and that ends up sometimes costing me a little bit of money. But I agree. And so, with that, I'm going to make a motion here. I know that other people have, because I don't want to harp it. I move that to vote against, what is it? Are PH 25-022?
Councilmember Segarra has made a motion to disapprove PH 25-022. However, we do have several councilmembers who'd like to make a statement. Councilmember Adams.
I've got a question. I keep hearing...
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a second for that before we can move forward to discussion.
Then you can discuss.
That's right. We need a second for the disapproval before we can move forward. Councilmember Segarra made a motion to disapprove PH 25-022. We have several people that still want to discuss. We needed a second to disapprove, or the motion dies. The motion has died.
I'll second that. I want to second that. I want to discuss it, but I'll second it.
You're going to second it for discussion. We have a motion on the table to disapprove 25-022, and a second by Councilmember Solomon. For discussion, Councilmember Adams.
I'm looking at a map, and there is, I want to make, what's being requested is for the two-mile stretch from Stan Sluter Loop to Clear Creek, correct?
No, sir. Thank you.
What is the stretch? We're talking about the exact stretch, because there's also a side street that's titled Bunny Trail. We're not talking about naming that street and the long stretch, are we?
That'd be from Councilmember Boyd for clarity, please.
I think you're talking about the portion that runs perpendicular with Hanes Elementary.
Right, I think that's...
And no, that would not be in consideration. That's an old retired road. I'm not sure why this even...
Is that the road where the, is that the mobile home park on the map? So what's on, are there any biz... Don't matter if it's not being in consideration. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. This is Councilmember Boyd.
I was going to make an amendment to the motion.
Madam City Attorney.
You can amend a motion, but the motion is to disapprove, so you're wanting to put a condition... A motion to amend is usually amending and not completely changing a motion, but I don't know what you're going to say.
Okay, I guess we'll just go through the vote eventually, and then I'll make a motion.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Solomon.
Yes, I wanted to comment on this because initially, you know, I thought it was just a few. We didn't have a couple of people, but a couple of people that were, that it would affect. But I see here that we have several. From what I understand, it's quite a few. And while we want to honor Mr. Davis and our proud Councilman Board and wanting to honor him, I really do. I believe that he was an honorable man. But we cannot negate the fact that there are people there, there are people that live that it would affect. It would, you have senior citizens there, and I really thought, I like the thought of naming the new park after Mr. AL Davis. I think it's, I think it would be good. He walked. Or if not that, let me say this, and also that we talked about Cunningham, and the way Cunningham was named was, it was not, I want to correct this, because it was not named. Cunningham still has Cunningham. People still have their address. It's memorial to Bishop Holcomb. His name is in memorial. It's not, it's not changing of a name the entire, we did not take Cunningham off. People still have their old address, and they've been there for some years. And so we recognize that, and we respected that. And so I think that we ought to do the same here, is to recognize that there are people. And at the same time, we could, we could, we could honor Mr. Davis, but also understand that there are people there that live there and on Bunny Trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Cobb.
Councilman Solomon, well said. I do agree with you, but I also agree with Michael. Councilman Boyd, we come to a fork in the road. We have nays and we have yays. We have so many reasons that we can't do this, but then we have so many reasons to honor Sergeant Major Davis. Well, you know what? I'm an old girl. I've been here since 1988. For thirty-seven years, I've been in the city of Colleen, living over there, maybe five years in Willis Springs, and then I moved to the Donut Hole. So many things that I hear, so many things that I know are falsehoods, some things I know are true. But tonight, I want to tell you something. There is one something that means more to a person than anything that you could ever forget, and that's your name. A name follows you wherever you go. The thing about it, a name also, the reputation of the person with the name will be around for ages. You have brought it to the forefront of who Sergeant Major Davis was. I know Sergeant Major Davis because I was a poor girl when I came here, got a little bit of money now because I've worked for about thirty-two years and married a husband, a good-looking husband, have three children, and we saved and we raised money. But when I first came here, the good thing about Sergeant Major Davis running on that road, my old Cutlass Desa, it just stopped. And I had two, three kids in the car, and one was in the car seat. Ooh, we, don't tell the police. But we had a car seat for one, the other two were just sitting in the car, and he stopped over. At first, I was frightened because I didn't know him. I'm an old Mississippi girl on the road, my car had broke down. He gave, he had a heart for us. He stopped, he helped us. We didn't have cell phones, and he helped. He helped turn a flat back to, took the donut out of the trunk of my car and got me going again. It is the heart of a man, along with his name, that will go way past anyone's thought, problems, or situations. You brought the heart of Sergeant Major Davis to this podium. And if there is one something that we will not forget, not his name nor the heart. In times of conflict, so many times I've wanted to scream at some of the things that we had to do, and I'm running out of time, but I know that his name will go. We have to understand the plight of so many people, of so many businesses, and even though we know the change may be minute...
Thank you, Councilmember Cobb.
I just can't go with you on it.
Councilmember Boyd.
I know, I'm going to get in trouble.
Let's go ahead and vote, then I have a motion to make on the original.
We had a motion on the floor to disapprove PH 25-022. All in favor, vote yes. Any opposed, vote no.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Before I vote, I would like to know if the vote fails, can we come back and put the amendment on another motion?
Yes.
Okay, we can't. Can Robert Rhodes of Order do that? I think it can. I was a parliamentarian for a long time.
I believe so. Thank you. A vote on the floor.
Okay. Okay.
We're waiting on Councilmember Cobb.
We have four in support and two vote no. Motion has been disapproved. Onto our discussion items.
No. I'm making another motion following that vote. I was trying to press my button here. It's not working.
The motion was disapproved.
Right, and so I'm making another motion.
We cannot make another motion once the motion has been disapproved.
I was trying to make an amendment during, and I was told...
There was a motion to disapprove, which is a dispository motion, and with disapproving, that's what I was saying, that normally a motion to amend, you can't completely change a motion. You can add conditions to it, change it up a little bit, like if the motion had been to approve, and you wanted to limit that to a certain area or something like that. But a motion to disapprove, I couldn't think of what you were doing without completely changing the motion, but then I added that I didn't know what you were going to say. But that was my advice, that a motion to amend, you can't completely change a motion.
At this point, can I ask the council to entertain a motion, which they would still have the ability to say yes or no?
Your rules state that after a dispositive motion has been made, there's no more discussion. However, those are your rules. They're not the law, so the council can determine if they want to do that.
I would go as far as, is that to ask, to consider a motion related to this. This was something that was very important to me. I believe it's still an opportunity, and I think it's appropriate with me bringing this forward to make another recommendation.
Councilmember Segarra.
I think it's important that we follow the rules and not change them.
Recommend. Thank you. We're going to move on to discussion items. We have three minutes, three times each. Madam Secretary.
DS 25016, receive Arts Commission annual report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tangley.
Thank you. Good evening. We have the Arts Commission Board Chair over here, Mr. John Miller, and he's going to present the Colleen Arts Commission Fiscal Year 2024 annual report.
Mr. Miller.
You could have done it. I wanted to say that.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Thank you, sir.
I'm here to present the Arts Commission Annual Report for 2025. Next slide, please. Okay, now give me a block of instruction. You handle the letter. We have to submit this annual report every year, and we make recommendations for long-term goals for the development of tourism and the convention hotel industry through the use of funding for the arts. City Council, you approved art grants for ten organizations last year. These organizations held a combined total of twenty-six events. We spent $271,751 was paid to the grantees. We had a total of $350,691 was allocated. Opera funds was utilized for certain grantees. Funding for the Arts Commission comes from fifteen percent, as allowed by Texas law, for hotel and motel taxes. Over the past three years, you can see, we've had ups and downs in funding. Opera funding for this year is absolute zero. We had $300,000, $305,200 was allocated for this year with zero opera funding. Remaining funding for fiscal year 2026 is $2,283,868. Marketing, City of Colleen, social media, we partner with local hotels and motels, commercially advertise to our community partners like the Chamber of Commerce. We partner with Downtown Revitalization Director and committees to submit and obtain the Texas Arts Commission's designation as an arts and cultural district for additional funding for permanent art installations and highlighting the diverse cultures of the city. So last year, we put some serious art downtown, and the art, culture and arts district is a key in getting that funding for these art initiatives. Right now, there is another round of the cultural arts district. I think we're waiting for the city council to designate a geographic area so that we can apply for greater funding from the state itself. We have multiple days, multi-day showcase competitions, meaning both spaced, ah, it's going too fast, both spaces showcase the arts, musicians, dancers, writers, chefs, poetry, et cetera. We work with local artists, create public art projects in various parts of Colleen, including downtown. Click it. That's it. So what we're really asking for you guys is your continued support by providing the, a portion of the hotel motel tax as we provide reasons for people to come to Colleen, Texas, to be in those hotels and motels. As part of the process, that every grantee must have hotel or motel rooms, thus we almost pay for ourselves in some cases, because we're providing that, that support that comes back to us. Your questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Cobb.
Hi, sir.
Hello, Councilmember Cobb.
I served on the Arts and Commission Board forever and ever.
Yeah.
And the most important something that we had was the hot tax. Without... Without it, you can't survive. We can't have activities, we can't have downtown activities, uptown, no downtown activities without the money.
Yes.
Of course, we're in a, we, of course, I think that it would be a wonderful idea that we continue to provide portions of the hotel tax. I don't think we can give you the complete, all of the revenue for hotel tax and revenue, but we can give you a portion so we can continue to have a town that's bumping and moving and arts and music and smiles and laughter. We need it, we need that.
Yes.
So, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One thing I would like to bring up to the city council is, not only do we fund things like Viva La Arts, the children's and adult theaters, but we are now actively looking at what we call a poet laureate, someone to represent our city in events, in the city and across the state. You'll see these types of poet laureates in Austin, Dallas, San Antonio, all of them have a cultural poet laureate tours, and we are trying our best to accommodate that for this city.
Wonderful. Councilmember Adams.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. My question is for, more for the Ms. Tangley. I saw on the slide about opera funds. He pulled it back up. We don't have any money left that's not allocated for opera, do we?
No, everything is allocated for opera.
Okay. That's, I mean, that's it. I just wanted to make sure we, we weren't about to be in trouble.
Oh, no, there's no, there's no money in the opera pot.
Thanks. That's all I had.
Thank you for your presentation. There are no further questions.
Thank you.
Attention, Madam Secretary, staff, citizens, and council, we're gonna take a five-minute Gonna bring our meeting back to order. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
DS 25017, Marijuana Enforcement Ordinance Annual Report.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, sir.
Green, right? All right. Good evening, ma'am. Mayor Protem, council members. Tonight, I will present the annual 2024 Marijuana Ordinance as required by the city ordinance. I'm gonna ask you to indulge me in allowing you to give me, to give me some time to get some context behind the data that I'm gonna present here tonight. All right. This slide compares the 2023 and 2024 marijuana suspects by gender. So there was a rise in the total number of marijuana suspects in 2024 compared to 2023. Males continue to make up the majority of suspect in both years. Females also saw an increase in suspect numbers, although the rise was smaller than that of males. The gender ratio remained consistent, but the overall increase suggests broader enforcement or more incidents in 2024. Even though traffic stops were conducted, the majority of the citizens received warning citations. About 63 to 70% of the citizens still received warning citations, if they were not in possession of an illegal gun or narcotics. In 2024, no racial profiling complaints were filed. Now, this slide compares 2023 and 2024 arrests by gender. In Killeen, Texas, prior to the decriminalization of low-level marijuana possession in November 2022, African-Americans residents were disproportionately represented in marijuana-related arrests. Specifically, although African-Americans constituted approximately 38% of Killeen's population, they accounted for about 71% of such arrests. The data revealed an increase in arrests when marijuana-related arrests rose in 2024 compared to 2023, affecting both males and females. Males continued to account for the majority of arrests, but female arrests also increased. The reason for that rise is that in 2024, the department implemented a new traffic, a new enforcement strategy. Officers were tasked with conducting three traffic stops per shift as part of the broader effort to curb violent crime and remove firearms from the street. While the majority of these stops resulted in warnings, arrests were made only when an illegal gun or another charge was present. The increase in arrests is likely a byproduct of this proactive enforcement strategy rather than a shift in marijuana policy enforcement. The data highlights the importance of monitoring the unintended impacts of crime suppression strategies on low-level marijuana offenses, especially marijuana possession, when equity and diversion remain top priorities. And I'm gonna talk about the diversion program at the end. This slide here is a comparison between suspects by race and ethnicity between 2023 and 2024. In this slide, the total number of marijuana-related suspects increased in 2024 compared to 2023, consistent, you recall, with the overall rise in enforcement activity and a new strategy. African-American suspects remained the most overrepresented group in marijuana-related suspect data. The number of African-American suspects increased in 2024, maintaining the trend seen in previous years. Hispanic and white suspects' numbers also rose, although at a slower pace than African-American suspects. White suspects' counts increased slightly, but they remain underrepresented, excuse me, but they remain underrepresented relative to population share. While enforcement was supplied uniformly, the persistent racial disparities in suspect data underscored the needs of further review of policy impacts. Now, this slide compares the marijuana arrests by race and ethnicity between 2023 and 2024. Overall, arrests increased in 2024 compared to 2023. African-Americans continued to represent the highest percentage of marijuana-related arrests in both years. The actual number of African-American individuals increased in 2024, maintaining a longstanding disparity. Despite making a smaller portion of Killeen's population, African-Americans were overrepresented again in arrest data. Hispanic and Latinos also increased, but not as sharply as those as black individuals. White individuals experienced a minor increase in arrests, and they remained underrepresented compared to their population share. The continued racial disparity in arrest outcomes, especially among African-Americans, raises concerns even in the absence of misconduct complaints. This supports the importance of implementing alternative approaches like the marijuana diversion program to reduce unnecessary arrests and build trust in the community. Now, this slide compares the type of marijuana charges that we do. We have missing, we have Class B, Class A, and then under four ounces, two to four ounces, over four ounces, under two ounces in the drug-free zone. So this compares all that data related to those arrests. 2024 saw an overall increase in marijuana-related charges compared to 2023. This rise is consistent with the broader increase in arrests and traffic stops conducted as part of the department's strategic shift to proactively address violent crimes. The type of charges remain generally similar year to year, but the volume rose across nearly all categories in 2024, as you can tell by the slides. This suggests the increase in charges is quantitative, not driven by new offenses. The department's 2024 directive for officers to perform three traffic stops per shift led to more encounters and in turn, more opportunities for charges to be filed when contraband like marijuana or firearms were discovered. Key observations saw two things. The increase in charges appeared to stem from higher enforcement activity, not a spike in marijuana use. Many of these charges were likely associated with multiple offense incidents as seen in Now, this compares the number of people arrested and the number of people released compared to 2023 and 2024. Increase in both arrests and releases experienced an increase, in 2024, excuse me, experienced an increase in the total number of marijuana-related stops compared to 2023. Both arrests and releases increased, but releases saw a more substantial jump indicating a greater use of discretion, as you could tell. In 2023, we arrested 118, but we released 610. In 2024, we arrested 121, but we released 909. The growing number of releases over arrests may reflect a soft, a soft shift toward de-escalation for low-level marijuana possession. This trend suggests that officers were distinguishing between minor violations and more serious offenses. This slide illustrates that while marijuana-related stops increased in 2024, officers frequently opted not to arrest, reserving arrests for more serious violations. It supports the notion that the department is already informally moving towards diversion principles, paving the way for a more formal marijuana diversion program to reduce arrests and promote equity. Now, this is a marijuana arrest-only versus multiple charges comparison. In 2024, there was a clear increase in the number of marijuana-related incidents that included additional charges compared to 2023. The most common additional charges in 2024 included unlawful possession of firearms, outstanding warrants, driving-related offenses, or drug paraphernalia or other controlled substances. This shift suggests that the marijuana-related activities were not only being made in isolation, but rather in the broader context of criminal conduct. The rise in associated firearm warrant charges reflect the intent behind the department's proactive traffic stop strategy to target individuals engaged in more serious or potentially Now, this slide, in 20, when the ordinance came out, it required the City of Killeen Chief of Police to establish some type of informal board to discuss marijuana, the results of the marijuana and suggestions to make, you know, this ordinance a little bit better. On March 19, 2025, I created the Chief of Police Advisory Board to discuss the 2024 marijuana incidents. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss the increase in arrests and charges, persistent racial disparities particularly involving black individuals, and the overall impact of the department's 2024 enforcement strategy. The Chief of Police Advisory Board is comprised of seven citizens, Killeen residents, who I chose to be part of the discussion. We had this discussion, like I said, on March 19, and the board acknowledged that although no racial profiling complaints were filed, the data clearly shows that it's overrepresentation of African-Americans being arrested for marijuana-related offenses in Killeen. Officers were followed in a crime suppression strategy focusing on conduct, conducting three traffic stops per shift, leading to more encounters, especially when we found marijuana. Recognizing the current enforcement strategy may be contributing to unintended disparities, the board and the chief, I did, reached consensus to explore a marijuana diversion program. The program will do things, or three things, divert eligible individuals away from the criminal justice system, and that's one of the things we always want to do. Offer education, treatment, or civil citations instead of an arrest, and focus especially on low-level marijuana possession. This meeting signals a meaningful policy shift from traditional enforcement towards diversion, equity, and harm reduction. By acknowledging the disparities and taking proactive steps, the department and the city is aligning enforcement with community expectation and public trust priorities. The decision to move toward a diversion program demonstrates forward-thinking leadership and a commitment to fairness in policing. Now, this is the proposed marijuana diversion program. This slide outlines a forward-looking initiative aimed at reducing the number of low-level marijuana arrests, particularly among minority populations who have been disproportionately impacted. The key objectives are to minimize criminal charges for minor marijuana offenses, provide alternatives to arrests such as education programs, substance abuse, treatment, civil citations, or administrative resolutions. It focuses on prevention over punishment, helping individuals to avoid lasting criminal records. The program is a direct response to the racial and ethnic disparities in marijuana enforcement shown throughout the report. It reflects a commitment to fair and balanced policing, particularly for communities mostly impacted by historical enforcement trends. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you for that, Chief. Councilmember Adams.
Chief, on the slide, and I think you clarified it for me, it showed the number, it had four, go back, go back one more. Yeah. So if I'm reading it right, so in 2023, we had 101 arrests for under two ounces, and in 2024, when the voters approved the petition, with zero.
Well, yes, correct.
Okay. And we're still enforcing the drugs, that's a federal thing, correct? The drug, drug-free zone?
What was the question again?
We're still, we're still enforcing regardless of whether it's two ounces.
Correct.
The drug. That, that's not affecting, I like, okay.
Right.
Thanks, that clarified it, because I couldn't see it probably too well, but now I see it up there. I wanted to make sure that was clear. Thanks.
I think no additional questions. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
DS 25018, Discuss Banner Sign Ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. This item is a discussion regarding banner signs. On April 15, the council approved a motion of direction to discuss the ordinance regulating banner signs, which are regulated in accordance with Killeen Code of Ordinance as Chapter 31, Article 5, Division 4, Signs and Outdoor Displays. The definitions and standards on the following slides were adopted in 2010 via Ordinance Section 31-502 includes a number of definitions. The definition of sign states that a sign shall mean any identification, description, illustration, object, or device visible from a public place or located on private property and exposed to the public and that directs attention to a product, service, place, activity, person, institution, business, or solicitation, including any banner, pennant, streamer, placard, or temporary sign designed to advertise, identify, or convey information, with the exception of window displays and flags. Bless you. The ordinance also provides a definition for banner sign. Banner sign shall mean any non-permanent sign usually made from cloth, vinyl, or similar material denoting a business-related advertisement, name, message, design, emblem, symbol, suspended or displayed for advertisement or to attract attention. A flag is defined as a piece of material designed to wave, usually rectangular, and secured by one side only. Temporary sign is defined as any non-permanent sign or advertising device. I mention these definitions because it was widely noted that there was a change in the way that we were enforcing the ordinance. So up until relatively recently, there had been an interpretation that banner signs, the type of signs that we're discussing tonight, were quote "flags." If you, if you consider the definition of a sign, it does say with the exception of window displays and flags. However, conventionally, flags are not advertisements, right? So we, there was a change in the, in the interpretation, which is, I think, what prompted this item tonight. So with that, Section 31-504 states that a temporary on-premise sign may be allowed with a permit prior to the installation, and the permit fee shall be in accordance with the adopted fee schedule. It also states that only one temporary ground sign is allowed per street frontage for each lease or business space at any given time, and each sign must be permitted separately. So this is the section that regulates, quote, "temporary on-premise signs." It also states that a business with frontage in excess of 300 feet may place an additional temporary sign for each 300 feet of frontage or fraction thereof with a permit for each additional sign. It also states that except for an inflatable sign, a temporary sign shall be limited to 32 square feet, and placement is limited to the owner's premises. Temporary sign permits shall be issued in increments of five days. Permit shall not be issued to a lease or business space for more than 120 days per calendar year. So for one permit, you get five days, or you can pull a permit that will give you up to 120 days in a year. that will give you up to 120 days in a year. Each temporary sign permit expires on the date shown on the permit. Currently, the fee schedule states that temporary on-premise signs are $75 per five-day increments per sign, plus a $10 technology fee. So if you want a permit for five days, you pay $75 plus the $10 fee. So that's $85. If you want up to, the maximum is 120 days in a year. So if you want 120 days a year, you pay 75 times whatever that is, plus one tech fee. Businesses with less than 300 feet, again, may have one sign for up to 120 days, which equals 24 five-day permits. So the total cost can be between $1,810 and $2,040 per year. The following slides are just some examples of banner signs that were taken here in Colleen. This is obviously a Sonic, this is a business on 195. This is a pretty typical example of these types of banner signs. This slide and the following one are the same business, so I think this business is the city hall right here. I think this business has a total of 10 banner signs on the property. This is an example of a banner sign that's actually in the right-of-way, so would not be allowed one way or another. Just some more examples here. In researching what other cities, how other cities address these types of signs, we looked at several cities. One, Belton, classifies these as fluttering signs, and they're completely prohibited. Coppers Cove allows them for up to 30 days without a permit and up to four signs per property. Georgetown classifies them as fluttering signs and are prohibited outright. Harker Heights allows them for grand openings only for up to seven days with a permit. Round Rock defines them as, quote, "swooper flags," which are also prohibited. Temple classifies them as portable signs and prohibits them completely. Waco allows them with a permit for up to 30 days at a time and up to 90 days per year, with not more than six permits issued per location in a single year, and the permit fee is $66, plus a $15 technology fee. Not listed on the slides, but I also reached out to the city of Austin and found that the city of Austin also prohibits them completely. So in terms of some considerations in determining how, whether, and how to amend the ordinance, some things to consider are, first, should these types of signs be allowed or be allowed at all? Or should they be prohibited completely? And if they are allowed, should the duration be limited? If so, what is an appropriate duration of time? Should the number or quantity of signs on a property be limited? And if so, how many signs should be allowed per property? Should they be allowed with or without a permit? And if a permit is required, what is the appropriate fee? So with that, staff's recommendation is the council provide a motion of direction to bring back a revised ordinance, and I'd appreciate any direction on that tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Mscher. Councilmember Segura.
Thank you. And this came about from our food trucks. And I know you said, like, Austin didn't allow them, but you go to Austin, and they got them everywhere on the food trucks. And a lot of times, those food trucks are not in properties they own, they're leasing. So my question is, do they have a separate ordinance for just food trucks? Because it shows that they don't have, but you go down there. I mean, I think when we created this, food trucks weren't as popular as they are today. So I think that we may have to look at, what are these ordinances for food trucks?
I don't know the answer to that question. I do know that when I reached out to the city of Austin, they said that they were prohibited. So a lot of times, what happens is people put them out, and perhaps code enforcement just hasn't addressed them, and that's why you see them.
Yeah. No, I was just wondering if there was, like, a separate ordinance for just food trucks, being that a lot of this stuff is not going to apply, you know? Because you mentioned something about being on your property, and I don't know if that means the property or your lease or your own, but if you're a food truck and you're just out there, a lot of times, it's not your property. So what kind of ordinance should be created for situations like that? So maybe that's something that we should try to dig up and see if there's something separate for them.
So what I know is that the city of Austin in 2017 adopted an ordinance that, quote, prohibits signs that are not permanently affixed to a building, structure, or the ground, and that are designed or installed in a manner allowing the sign to be moved or relocated without any structural or support changes. And that's Section 25-10-103, subsection 4 of the City of Austin Code prohibits them.
Yeah, because I remember when I first got on the council, this was a big issue. We had the furniture stores, Ashley, and, you know, we had a lot of pushback. So we kind of adopted it, thinking in line of those temporary, those grand openings, those specials that they got. But now, you know, I don't think, at that time, we considered what the big thing is, which is the food trucks. So it's something that we may have to create something for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Segura, that's actually a very valid point. One of the things that I was looking at is that we do now have a food truck ordinance, and that is something that a lot of cities are moving to because of that change, and that it's a conversation that I feel does need to happen at some point. Thank you. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Are we addressing the signs that are affixed to buildings as well, or how does that apply here?
Signs that are affixed to buildings are...
I'm sorry, not signs, banners, rather.
Temporary signs or banners that are affixed to buildings are permitted and permissible in accordance with the same section.
And so, in order to find violations, this is something that's in the parameters of code enforcement, is that correct?
That's right. So again, Section 31-504 allows temporary signs. So if you want to hang a banner on your building, you can do so in accordance with the same section, so five days at a time with a permit, et cetera.
Now, the, go ahead.
I was going to say, the issue arose, I think, primarily because most of the signs that you see that are in violation of this section, ones that, signs that have been put up that don't have a permit, are these types of flag banner signs.
So you're kind of looking for a motion of direction on how we want to address the banner signs, or the flag signs specifically?
Specifically, the types of signs shown in the pictures that were included in the presentation, so.
Sure. And I think it's interesting that some cities don't allow them at all. I do believe they have a place. Me personally, I believe they have a, they should be out for a short timeframe and not for a prolonged period of time. I like the idea of the grand openings and, or, you know, events like that, but just out there as advertisements, that's kind of, I don't know, I'm not in favor of that. But that's just my personal opinion for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you. So, me with some of the business owners that complained, even before the food truck issue, small businesses, especially those in the plazas, are less, or less visible locations, rely on banners and flags for visibility and customer attraction. The previous, the current fee structure is financially, has been known to be burdensome, potentially tolling, if a business does this, like, $4,000 annually, which can be unsustainable, since we talk about promoting small business. That doesn't promote small business. That actually kills it and only allows the larger businesses to survive in the city. So I do think a more affordable fee structure should be presented. Enforcement should be consistent across all business types. I know only certain businesses were paying the fee for permits, some weren't. Some didn't even know it existed until code enforcement did their job to enforce it. And we have car dealerships and other larger that use this signs to attract, and they stay up, and they pay for them to stay up. So I think some clearer guidance got to be done. And then I see the importance of maintaining our aesthetics and making the city visual appeal is maintained. But there also has to be a balance between allowing businesses to operate. So I think we should be, sort of, whatever we propose should include, I know Mayor Protem, you may have some, but I can present mine now if it meets what you have. And so I was going to suggest we amend the ordinance, unless I present it as a motion of direction now. But my ideas were to permit, five or six different parts. Businesses could, may obtain an annual permit for up to two banners or flags at a flat rate of $100, and then each additional banner or flag requires an additional fee of $25 annually. Permitted banners and flags may be displayed during business hours. Businesses operating outside of standard hours may request a waiver for extended display times. Am I talking too fast? All signage must be maintained in good condition, free from tears, fading, discolorational damage. Signs that become unreadable or unsightly must be repaired or removed. I think that's in the ordinance.
There's a separate section that deals with dilapidated signs.
And so I want to make sure that's addressed, too. First and second violations of the previous resulting written warnings. The third violation with a 12-month period, within a 12-month period, would incur a fine of $75 per non-compliant sign. And then businesses may request a waiver for specific circumstances. Mayor, finish.
Do you want to use your second, your time, your next three minutes?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, he's going to extend his three minutes, please. Thank you.
Businesses may request waivers for specific circumstances subject to approval of the city manager or the designated, I think in many cases, development services. And then decisions can be appealed to the board of adjustment. I do think we should have in the field process with a final appeal to the council. And then this should not supersede, lease requirements cannot supersede the ordinance. I don't know if this is necessary, but, and then the ordinances, this ordinance or the amendments should not grant rights to it if the lessor does not permit it. Because I don't want people thinking that just because the ordinance says it, it means you can just do it if you got a sign of lease for it. That's all I have.
Holly, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is it okay for the city attorney to comment on that?
Yes, Madam City Attorney.
Well, initially, I just, I had requested to speak on the, and I can address any questions or issues that just came up with that, but I wanted to make a note that, you know, there was some discussion about, you know, food trucks, and I didn't hear that in what you were talking about, but I wanted to make it clear that the sign regulations need to be content neutral. And so we couldn't, what that means is, you couldn't have an ordinance on the books that says you can advertise for your food truck, but you can't advertise for something else. So that wouldn't be content neutral. So our sign regulations, generally what you're going to see and what's allowed by time, manner, place regulations are time periods. How long can you have a sign out there? How big can it be? How far does it have to be spaced out? Can you have it at all at certain zoning locations or certain zoning districts or certain locations? Things of that nature. So I just, like I said before, we got too far into maybe talking about content in the advertising. I just wanted to make it clear that the sign regulations should be content neutral. And then, yeah, there was a lot there. We don't normally see in an ordinance requiring warnings in the code of ordinances or a specific fine. I mean, these fines would be up to $500, and then the judge would set the fine generally, but, I mean, you could do that, but it would be unusual.
I don't think I set an amount for the fine.
I heard you say $75.
Was it?
Yes.
Oh, well. But that's, okay. I mean, we can, these are just suggestions. And then, again, those are suggestions I actually got from that, from some of the community that
That's right.
actually are flying the signs. They're not saying, just let us do it without, without any, you know, we do wrong, we do wrong, but don't kill us with the fees.
Thank you. And then the question was, you know, do we need to consider a separate food truck ordinance, not conjunction with the sign banner? So that was the question that Segura had.
I have a future agenda item that's going regarding food trucks.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Cobb.
I have a quick, I agree with you, Mrs. Clemmons. I think there should be an ordinance in which all signs follow. I had three of my swooper flags taken away during election. So I would like to make sure that during our elections, that we put information about the swooper flags, the banners. I used banners for my election, and they were all out on the road and in the highway. The ones that are showing, those are my flags, except they said Nina Cobb. And when I would go back to that location, they were gone. Because I did not meet the criteria.
You mentioned that they were in the right-of-way?
They were in, they were all kinds of wrong. I didn't know, I didn't have a rule to where to put them. When I first started, I put those flags everywhere I wanted, because they're noticeable. I know why the food trucks in all the different places use those signs. You see them. They're attention-getters that help with your business. But we've just got to make sure that we have some kind of uniform, something simple. Just nothing outrageous or hard to do. I know what it means to pay for those flags, and then you go back and all of them are gone.
Couple of things. I'm not aware that code enforcement staff removed any election flags.
Oh, they could. I knew I was wrong after they told me.
So I don't, I'm not aware that that was, that that was done by anyone on staff.
When I first ran, because I lost, when I first ran, maybe because I didn't follow the rules, huh?
But generally speaking, and that's why I brought up the example, this one here. If the decision is made to allow these, my assumption is that at least one would be allowed. However, this one in particular is in the right-of-way, and we do not allow signs in the right-of-way under any circumstances. We also have language that addresses visibility triangles at intersections, and that, again, is for public safety, so I wouldn't recommend changing that.
Yeah, so let's put election signs and those signs in also. I think that would be a happy knack.
If I could, there are, there is a separate section on additional signs during election season.
Of the super flags?
It's not under the super flag. It's got its own, its own section, what the rules are. Yeah.
All right. Well, I did learn afterwards. So it's a nice, it's a learning experience, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Cobb. Councilmember Solomon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I notice we, I don't know if we have a name for these flags, or what do we call them?
Different cities define them differently, as I mentioned.
Super flags, portable signs, what is Colleen going to?
I think I'm open to direction from the council. I've brainstormed a couple of different ideas. As I mentioned, the city of Round Rock defines them as swooper flags. I've seen them referred to as feather flags, sail banners, J flags. There are a lot of varying different terms. So if, when we draft an ordinance, we will be sure to come up with a definition and define them, and then they'll have a term moving forward.
Right. And based on what we would like to see, could not, I mean, I'm hearing the ordinance and all, but could not y'all come back to us with something, I mean, you know, based on what we're seeing today, but not, I think that y'all could come up with something that, and see if we would agree to that.
Yes, sir.
I mean.
Solomon, Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think Councilmember Solomon has the same idea I had. You know, you guys are the experts. I think y'all could write this up better than we could. We can give you some direction like you asked for. I think the biggest complaints that I heard was the fees and how long they could have them. So, you know, if there's something that we can do in there, you know, there's probably a balance between what you showed in all of our neighboring cities, from Coppers Cove to Harker Heights, maybe find some sort of compromise in there. But, you know, I think keeping it simple is the way to go. The more that we get into the weeds with this thing, you know, you can never plan for every definition or scenario or sign that's going to be out there. So I think the more simple we can keep it, the better. I would also like to suggest, I saw the city of Austin had a, it was like a one-page handout, but it had pictures on it, because sometimes words, you know, it may mean something to you that means something different to me. So interpretation may be a problem. So they had pictures in this handout, you know, it was like kind of summary of the signs, what you can have, what you can't have, how much these cost, and maybe that helps take some of the guesswork out of it. You know, the other thing is, I know a lot of businesses depend on these because they're inexpensive, but even when you buy these signs, they're noted on there that they have a lifespan and are not meant to be... that they have a lifespan and are not meant to be permanent signs. So I think as long as we keep, I believe we have a good ordinance when it comes to the maintenance of signs, and, you know, once they're faded or falling apart or tattered and torn, or whatever the case may be, obviously then that needs to go. But, yeah, I think if we can find a balance between what you showed that the, our neighboring cities have and what we currently have, and make the permit fee more equitable to a lot of the smaller businesses, you know, take the timing into consideration, how many days they can have it for, I think we can come up with something simple that everybody can, can live with.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. I, I would second that motion. So based on the conversations that I've had, and along with Councilmember Adams, the bottom line was very simply the concern over the fee schedule, right? At the end of the day, the clarity, the photos, that is important to them as well, so they know exactly what it is. But the fee schedule, in my research, I found that some of those flags, again, speaking separately from an ordinance, it's specifically for food trucks, it was a whole different conversation, but in general, these feather banners were on a scale of like, for example, one to three days, like special event, right? Four to fourteen days, fifteen to thirty, thirty-one to sixty, and then there was an annual fee. So something along those lines, I think, would be reasonable. And every single business owner that I spoke to, not one of them was opposed to pay, opposed to paying something, they just wanted it to be fair and equitable. And all of them were in favor of an increased penalty for those people that were not following the rules, right? If they had tattered signs, they, they did want those people to pay for not following for the rules. So, yes, as we're building this, that would be my recommendation, is please consider a simple, a special event use, like a one-to-three-day, four-to-fourteen, fifteen-to-thirty, thirty-one-to-sixty, and an annual fee schedule. Councilmember Sagara?
My confusion, we're just talking about the flag signs, and when I mentioned earlier, you know, Austin has it, and they do have signs, they do allow the signs up front, and I think that what their ordinance says is signs that are not directly related to a food truck's primary business are not allowed, but small signs that are directly related to food truck business and provide information about the menu, the pricing, or business name, it says are typically allowed. So I think that's probably all the signs, when you go to Austin, you see the signs, and they're outside in front of the truck, they have the menus and stuff like that.
Like the sandwich board signs?
Yeah, yeah, so they said those are okay.
Right.
Yeah, but I think we're talking about just those flag signs, and I don't think you see a lot of those because they do, they do have that ordinance, no flags. But, thank you, but I think it's important that, as Mr. Adams said, that we do get a food truck ordinance, because I think that there is a lot more to it than just signs when you start looking at food trucks. And I had one, one, they didn't have a food truck, but they had one of their little kiosk thing, food, food things at one of our events down, and they stopped me, they chased me down, and they said that they had to pay for each member that was there serving food. And I don't know if they do that with food trucks or not, but, you know, their complaint was, you know, why is each person had to pay and how much it cost them and all this. I said, that's probably something we have to look at too, so.
It's already something that's on our radar, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sagara. Councilmember Boyd?
Sure, and I didn't mention this during my last time, the fee schedule is very important. I know that's a burden for a lot of the business owners, or at least that's what I heard, so we can revisit that and make it complimentary. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Solomon?
Yes, I want to go ahead and make a motion of direction that she would take what we have just talked about, and bring back to us some suggestions that we can work with. That was a motion.
Do we have a second? Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Solomon and a second by Councilmember Cobb. Madam Assistant, City Manager, yes, ma'am.
If I could, whilst, does that give you enough direction to put something together?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, vote yes. Any opposed, vote no. It looks like we have all in favor for bringing a motion of direction to bring back a ordinance for council to review. Thank you. Madam Secretary?
DS 25019, Discuss 2025 Legislative Update with the Schluter Group.
Well, Council, I'm just here to introduce the Schluter Group. We're excited to have him here tonight. They've been working hard for us down in Austin. They've been with the city of Colleen, fighting our battle for, since 2017, so we're excited to hear an update on what's been going on in Austin.
And I'll try not to bore you. There's nothing boring going on down there, down there at all. Honorable Mayor Protem, honorable members of the council, appreciate you having us here this evening. I was pacing back and forth back there, not because I was out of patience, but because I've had ankle surgery in the last month or so, and I'm still kind of have to move around to keep it from getting stiff, so I apologize if you thought I was trying to leave. As you probably know, the, the main thing that started in Austin, what's happening in Austin right now, happened during the Republican primaries last year. It's the first time I've seen a party take after its own members, like I saw happen in that primary. And it was all about vouchers. Several billionaires, and they are mega billionaires, I know them, put up millions of dollars and went after about fifteen members of the House of their own party. And they put million, two million dollars in a House race, a job that pays seventy-two-hundred dollars a year. I know y'all make a lot more than that. I'm just kidding. And I appreciate the fact that you do what you do for what you get paid, because I feel the same way about members of the legislature. It's a sacrifice at best. But anyway, they, they beat, the members they beat, not on the issue of vouchers, they beat them on hyped-up things that the members didn't even do. I mean, I watched my good friend Hugh Shine beat up on him having been opposed to closing the border. It was because there was one little minutia issue in the, that bill that had vouchers in it that talked about closing the border. Nothing. Otherwise, he had a hundred percent voting record on closing the border, if, if that was as significant to you or not. So they beat eleven House members and elected people who support vouchers. And as you know, the bill has passed this session, it's been signed by the governor, it was signed this last Saturday, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that now. But I want to have a great respect for your time and your families being able to get home. I know that, I sat through these meetings, I sat through them for fourteen years in the legislature, till three and four or five in the morning, and just like we do now, we watch them on TV, while we're on our phone watching them, and then watching them live. You know, we're tri, 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 tri-fecta, you know, trying to watch as many of them as we can and keep up with it. This last session, this current session, there were, there have been nine thousand individual bills that have been introduced, nine thousand individual pieces of legislation. And when somebody says, well, what do y'all do? Well, try reading nine thousand bills. If they were one page long, that would be one thing. If they were on one subject, that would be another thing. But they're on environment, they're on criminal law, they're, they're on water, they're on fire protection, you name it, it covers the waterfront. And we, oh, sorry. But we have to read them, but make sure there's not anything in there that looks to what's happening in the city of Colleen. Not only that, we, we mark them and we keep up with them as they're amended, because sometimes, like right now, we're in the throes of, the legislature's getting ready to shut down the process, and that's when the bad things happen, when they're in conference committee late at night, somebody throws an amendment on a bill, and sometimes you don't see it until it's getting ready to be concurred, the amendment's being concurred in, or the report is going to be adopted, the conference committee report. So I said, I compared it, I sat down, I looked, because these are a couple of books I read when I was younger, that nine thousand bills, if each one was a page, well, the book War and Peace has eleven hundred and thirty-six pages, so you'd have to read it nine times in the first three months of the session, while keeping up with the hearings and the amendments that are going on to it. Or Dr. Chicago, which I read in the ninth grade because I was a fool and I was trying to impress my teacher, didn't like the book. You'd have, it's five hundred and ninety-two pages, you'd have to read that, you know, eighteen times. So there, there's a lot going on, and everybody's always trying to find the weak link. And I say that because there's a lot of talk, talk about doing away with people who lobby for cities. Okay, that's fine, if that's what the council decides, you know, we serve at your pleasure. But these people who defeated those eleven people, they're the same, they're the ones pushing, promoting taxpayer-funded lobbyists, getting rid of them, they have an agenda, and they have bought their agenda, and they can buy anything they want. They're real estate people, they're oil people, they got very rich in the oil business, they're trying to do everything they can to push their way of government. I've never seen anything like this in my almost fifty years of being involved in the legislature. We had rich people, you know, we had millionaires from Houston, but they all got together, as you have said in this meeting several times, not pull together for the betterment of the community, but them as the betterment of the state. These folks are interested in one thing, themselves. And that's what's happening in the legislature now. That's not to say all members are doing that, because they're not. But it's really difficult, if you think that's the most wonderful thing in the world, being a member of the legislature, to grow a spine and stand up against those odds, because they will, and they will tell you, you don't vote for us, we're coming after you next time. That's how they run their business. Anyway, there are eighteen hundred and thirty-five, just for your information, eighteen hundred and thirty-five registered lobbyists in Austin, eighteen hundred and thirty-five. Seven hundred and fifty-one list as being involved in the city issues, seven hundred and fifty-one, and seven hundred and thirty-one are listed as involved in county issues, which are pretty much interchangeable, because we, you know, counties and cities kind of run together. And there's, I, I quit at the letter M, or N, I can't remember, last night. There are a hundred cities right now that have registered lobbyists in Texas. So what's going on now is the House has changed to eighty-eight, sixty-two, eighty-eight Republicans, sixty-two Democrats. The Senate's twenty Republicans and eleven Democrats. Neither, the Democrats really can't get much done without getting along with, with the Republicans, except in the House. This time, we had a new speaker. And it happened as, for a lot of different reasons, because those millionaires beat his, eleven of his friends, for one thing. This Republican speaker was elected majority-wise by Democrats. You don't hear what I say? The Democrats, by majority, voted for a Republican speaker. So that's the first time in history that that's happened. So, but we still have a bipartisan House, we still do. And that's what I always fought for when I was there, is that you listen to everybody, you do the best thing for the state, and I know that people say that's BS, but it's not BS, it's the truth. You have people you represent, you know you've got to give a little, you've got to take a little, and the end result is you do the best you can to take care of everybody. What's been driving the changes in Texas the last ten years, well, I guess the things that we've never thought, thought of before, is population, just, you know, and it just, it's been booming. I thought about what you said about thirty, what did you, thirty-six years ago you came to Colleen? Thirty-seven years. I came here in nineteen fifty, and I was five years old, and I looked up, the population of Colleen was sixteen thousand. When I graduated from high school, it was twenty, twenty-six or twenty-seven thousand. It grew, ten thousand, and, you know, nothing like it is now. Well, the state of Texas has grown even by bigger leaps and bounds. There are now thirty-one million people in Texas, thirty-one million. From twenty-two thousand to twenty-twenty-two, the state gained nine million people. In twenty-twenty-two, they had thirty million, and like I said, now we have thirty-one. But they're saying by twenty-sixty, there will be fifty-four point four million people in the state of Texas. What does that mean? Infrastructure, water, highways, schools, all those things that we didn't have to, we worried about them before, but it's just been pushed on us now, we have no choice. I mean, they're widening, they've been widening thirty-five since I could drive. I mean, and I assume they'll be widening it after I die, and they're your kids who are driving on them. But that's just, that's just a minor part. Oil and gas industry has destroyed probably almost as many roads as we can build, but they're one of the biggest producers of income in the state of Texas. The, the legislature focused, has focused so far on school finance, power, power grid, power grid adequacy. What does that mean? That means enough power to power all of these people that are going to be moving to this state, all of the artificial intelligence, which consumes a whole lot more energy. Crypto, cryptocurrency consumes, and you don't want to tell anybody they can't come, but you've got to build the power to do it. So they've set up a lot of programs to take care of that problem. This year, the budget, the biennial budget that's in conference right now is three hundred and thirty-seven billion dollars. When I first got to legislature, it was twenty-two billion. I'm old, but I mean, it's increased that much. In two thousand and five, it was only a hundred and eighteen billion, in two thousand and fifteen, it was two hundred and ten billion. So it's grown that much each time. There's a twenty, twenty-eight billion dollar surplus, that means, well, you know what a surplus is? That's how much we have left after we paid all the bills. So the biggest, the biggest thing that happened this session, of course, was the vouchers that, that the, that the governor just signed. It's for ten thousand students. It's ten thousand dollars per student, except for a handicapped or, or person that has mental problems, it can be as much as thirty thousand dollars. And it's, the entry is based on a lottery system, on the federal poverty rate, the poverty, poverty number is thirty-two thousand dollars a year. So there's four levels of entry in there, and I don't know, you don't want to hear all about that. Currently, there's another bill in conference committee that you need to know about, because Brad Buckley is the House, House head of that committee on the House side, and then the Senate on the other side of Creighton. It's an eight billion dollar additional slug of money for public schools, for teacher pay raises, and the, the basic allotment for schools. In that budget, I forgot to mention, that the three hundred and thirty-seven billion, seventy percent goes to education and health. Seventy percent of the budget goes to education and health. Everything else gets what's left. Education, of course, includes also higher ed. They have a constitutional amendment for a three billion dollar fund for dementia research, to take care of the old people. A billion, a billion dollars into the water fund to help cities fix their leaking water systems, in addition to other things, and develop new resources. They're putting six and a half billion more in border security. A billion for a nuclear power fund, there, you know, their nuclear power's coming back. There's already some nuclear power facilities in Texas. As a matter of fact, there's a couple, I think, on the A and M campus I had pointed out to me. Six billion into highways, in addition to the money they got, they've got a six billion diversion from the rainy day fund. This one I don't understand, but it's two and a half billion for movie production. Two hundred and, two and a half billion over ten years, two hundred and fifty million a year, I, you know, I don't know, it's, and a billion for the voucher bill. So I said eight billion more for school finance, and just last night, they, they agreed on tax relief. Your home state exemption is going to go from a hundred thousand, I mean, a hundred thousand to a hundred and forty thousand. If you're a senior or disabled, it's going from a hundred and fifty to two hundred. And then they're doing a business inventory tax, increase exemption from twenty-five hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that's good, that part of it. The thing I, I don't think people understand is that fifty-two billion dollars of that three hundred and thirty-six billion dollar budget is allocated for the buy-down of the tax rate, and I'm going to use that term and not, not try to explain it, because it's a little more complicated than that. Not that you can understand it, but you'd be here all night. In other words, the state expends fifty-two billion, they, because they hold the school districts harmless, when they give all these different exemptions, elderly exemption, all these, they give the money to the school districts, so they don't lose any money, they're held harmless. That's fifty-two billion dollars, every biennium, fifty-two billion. So when they walk in the door, it's like the national debt. And those of us who have been around a long time have said, how long is this sustainable? How long can you keep this up? We know this, my son's going to talk about disabled vets and all of that, because school districts get reimbursed for disabled vet exemption, cities don't, nobody else does. Because they're trying to keep school tax, which is the biggest tax of all of them, they're trying to keep that down. And part of the other deal is the rainy day fund that I created in eighty-eight is going to have twenty-seven billion dollars in it at the end of the year. And some people say, well, why don't they give that in, in tax relief and other things? And the point is, that's what the rainy And the point is, that's what the rainy day fund is for. This great economy that we're enjoying right now, and maybe some people that are watching a lot of TV are saying, well, it's really not that great right now. Well, I've seen a lot worse. When I got to legislature, the price of oil was under $10 a barrel, and we were dying. And so it can happen. Things can turn around real quick, especially in this world today, you know, the way it's going. So that's the general overview, and Brad's going to talk to you about some more specific things that you have been interested in, and the things that you wanted us to do and watch for.
Mayor Protem, counsel, thank you all for having us here tonight. As he said, I want to drill in a little bit on some of the key issues that we've been working on for the city of Colleen, and revisit some of the legislative priorities that the council adopted back in November, and some of the legislative progress that pertains to those priorities. The first and the primary thing that we work on is the impact of the 100% disabled veteran exemption, property tax exemption. Since it was created in 2009, we're kind of reaching a point in the life cycle of this exemption, especially in the Colleen-Fort Cavasos area, where the number of exemptions and the value of property exempted is growing at double digits every year, particularly around here. I don't have to tell you all that. And it's more, at the same time, more entities are qualifying to get into the reimbursement program, further divvying up a pie that has not grown since 2020. Right now, the budget is $19 million per biennium. There's nine entities currently in the program today, and we're told by the Controller's Office that there's three more that will qualify in 2025. So without further funding, Colleen will receive less of a reimbursement this year. The Senate has been reluctant to hear any legislation that expands the Disabled Veteran Assistance Payment Program. There was an interim hearing last year, in which Senator Flores invited several local governments to come testify. And there was another hearing in January, in which the Controller's Office laid out their legislative appropriation request to the Senate Finance Committee. And in both committee hearings, there was comments about capping the program, capping property value that can be exempted. And that has been a stone wall for any, any attempt to expand the program to, you know, obviously, we hear every day about, you know, especially the Harker Heights and the Nolanvilles and Lampasses counties. So there are, there's really two avenues to try to bring in more money and/or adjust the statute with this payment assistance program exist. The first is the budget. It is a line item in the Controller's Budget, and we work on this every two years. We have to come back and fight for that 19 million that's on there, and work with our local electeds to increase that amount. The Controller's Office had an exceptional item in their budget for an additional $50 million to put into the program. The House adopted it in their initial budget, the Senate did not. They are currently conferring on the bill for the next three weeks or so, and they will eventually, we're told maybe even next week, make a final decision on whether to adopt that additional 50 million or not. But there are competing interests everywhere, and there's those in the legislature who don't care to see this program grow anymore. As much as they support the military, it's always about the money. So there are, the other avenue by which you can change this is legislation. There is one bill I'll speak about that's moving. There's a handful of others that, honestly, at this point, with the deadlines, we've got three and a half weeks left to session. Bills that have not been heard in committee by today are effectively dead, just by virtue of the time it takes to get on a committee hearing schedule, to lay it out for the committee to then put together the report, they have to do the bill analysis, they have to go to the Legislative Budget Board and get a fiscal note. All this takes time. And so every time there's a hiccup with the bill, a member wants to, you know, slow a bill down, every week matters and can lead to the killing of a bill. So the one bill that is moving is a House Bill 2894 by Representative Hicklin that is already in the Senate. That one, it did expand the program to municipalities that are over 10% impacted, and that was to address the Harker Heights and Nolanville issue. And then when it was on the House floor, there was an amendment tacked on that added 10% impacted counties that are adjacent to counties with an installation wholly or partially located. And that was to pull in Lampasses County. As I said, there's roadblocks in the Senate. This is sitting over there with the Chairwoman of Senate Finance, who has her issues with the program. And we work with them, we work with our, you know, with our two representatives and our state senator, and we're going to work in the interim, because the Chairwoman has said she wants to reform the program, as in the thresholds to get in, how much money's in there, can we have a dedicated funding source? And we are going to work on that in the interim. But at this point, that is, that is not happening. So that bill would likely include three more counties and five more cities. So without the promise of more funding, that is a threat to us at this point. There's a Brad Buckley, Pete Flores companion bill, that means they're the same, filed in each chamber, that have not gotten a hearing at this point, and as I said, they're effectively dead. Unless you have leadership pushing, I mean, we saw a bill get voted out of committee a couple of days ago, and it's already out of a Senate committee, and it made it to the House 48 hours later. The Senate operates much more fast and loose than the House does, as far as rules and whatnot. The other big budget issues I'd like to talk about real quickly, DAG, the Defense Economic Adjustment Assistance Grants. There is 20, there's 30 million already budgeted, as has been the last few bienniums. The Governor's Office did request an exceptional $20 million on top of that. The House did not adopt that 20 million, and the Senate adopted 10 million of it. Again, that will happen, that's a budget line item, that'll happen in conference committee with the budget bill. The other is public transit. There is a line item in Techsot's budget for large urban transit areas, of which Colleen is one. And they have an exceptional item for an additional $4 million to fully fund the transit budget with the growing population, and that would impact the HOP and the Hill Country Transit District, so. I will touch on a couple of other legislative priorities. Obviously, number one, the big one is the disabled vet exemption. Another one is the opposing of any extension of state-granted veterans' exemptions that are not fully funded by the state. There is one House bill that is currently in Senate Committee that would expand the exemption to surviving spouses of a veteran who died of qualifying conditions or disease. The former Communications Director for the city used to go testify in person, such a hard thing to do, we support our veterans, no one questions that. However, the city and the communities around our military installations can't sustain it anymore. I think one of the citizens earlier was talking about, we can't hire police, we can't hire fire. Well, this tax exemption is one of the primary drivers of that. Another legislative priority is advocate for increased funding for aquifer storage, the big water bill. Senator Perry, SB 7 is in committee, they're working on final committee substitute language, they're working on if it's going to be $2 billion, if it's going to be $1 billion to start. And then the senator, who's from rural West Texas, wants the funds to be 80% to rural areas, new water supplies, and 20% to big cities for fixing leaky pipes, whereas the House wants a little bit more 50-50. So again, that will, that will be hammered out in conference committee when they get there. Also, on a positive note, Senate Bill 1194, the Central Texas Water Alliance, was sent to the Governor's Desk this morning, for his signature, actually. So that's something we got to work on with Bell County and all the surrounding counties and communities, and that's going to be a great vehicle for Colleen to go secure new water supplies with its regional partners. Last one I'll touch on is advocating for clear legislation preventing initiative ordinances that would violate state or federal law from being placed on the ballot. We obviously just discussed that. I know there's another item coming behind us. There is a Senate bill that has already been reported out of House Committee, meaning it has had to the calendars and then hit the House floor. For those Senate bills that have cleared the first chamber, they have ample time to get that passed. And that bill is specific to marijuana and other hemp products. So that one, again, is Senator Perry, who's carrying the water bill, and that is looking like it's going to pass. It would prohibit municipalities from adopting ordinances that violate state law. So if there are any questions, we happen to answer, but that sums up the priorities that we're working on, so.
Thank you. We appreciate the information. You do have some questions. So Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. First, I know one of our priorities was fighting preemption. I know there were a number of bills. One was very interesting, that would have allowed a state legislator to sit in our executive sessions. I know that died, that really didn't make sense, but it was actually filed. But I, I know there were some that also, Mayor, are you noticing any preemptive bills or any bills taking away ETJ? And I have a couple of other questions after you answer that.
The answer is yes, yes. There's, there was the, I believe, Senate Bill 2038 from last session, that was the area released from ETJ with just a simple majority of landowners in the area. And I know there's, you know, there's a bill or two to touch up on that, but the legislature's always looking at opportunities to strip authority from cities and counties.
Cities and counties. I mean, it's, the last, the last six years have been unbelievable about the way they were trying to take power away from cities and counties.
So we're seeing a lot of those bills getting passed, and we'll probably just be a planning committee in September.
Well, they've got the majority of both, they've got the majority of both Houses, the head dog over in the Senate and the governor. What does it say, elections have consequences?
Yeah. The other one, I know we're pushing nationally about the, because I know there's a Brookings report that said 15%, less than 15% of the bipartisan infrastructure money came to cities or below the state level. And I know sitting on K-Tempo, we're fighting with other NPOs, even with Techsot, just to give money into the region. There's any shift to where they're going to start pushing more money at the state level, so we're not asking Congress, we're also asking Congress to give NPOs and cities more money, but has somebody stepped up and say, hey, we can't just keep widening 35?
There's a bill floating around that does exactly what you want to do. We'll see what happens to it.
Okay, I'm really interested in that one.
Yes, sir.
The Inflation Reduction Act is getting caught in the Doge crosshairs, and there's the Home Energy Tax Credits Program that would send hundreds of millions of dollars to Texas, that right now is in limbo. Will the Trump administration allow that money to flow? It's already flowed to several states that are already spending it. So our legislators, our senators, they're asking for the money.
I know, I got an update, May 12th is there, is another push they want us to make through our congressional representation about funding for some of the infrastructure. And some of that also applies to the transit. And I think that little bit of money is not going to help all the metropolitan, the urban transit areas in the state of Texas. Yeah, thanks.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Segaro.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for being here, and thank you for waiting for like three hours there in the back. Really appreciate that. But you mentioned, you know, the Republicans kind of infighting the other Republicans, but they also seem to be fighting the cities. And, you know, they're trying to take control. And I had gotten, I've gotten a couple of mailers, and I got one right here, and it says, "State lawmakers have been delivering historic property tax relief." And then on the bottom highlighted, and I won't even say who this came from, because it's one of our representatives here, but someone wants those tax dollars, your local city and county government. And there's been a couple of them. We were trying to do a bond, but it was being countered by our own representatives. And it's like, I got it in the mail saying, you know, vote no on bond, vote those. And when it comes down to cities like ours, we're already getting, you know, veterans' exemption, and they're sending that, things to that. How do they expect city to survive?
All I will say, is what I said earlier, is the people who have taken control or trying to take control don't like you. They don't like us, they don't like cities. I mean, when I was in legislature, we believed that the government closer to the people governed best, and that would be cities and counties above legislature. And that, as a matter of fact, that's even what Republicans thought. Not anymore. You're the bad guy because you're doing all these progressive things. I'm not going to get into that anymore than just saying, you know what I'm talking about. And you know which cities they're after. And that, they're trying to stop that. I mean, you go down the list of everything, you know what I'm talking about. I don't want to start that ball rolling downhill.
I know it, but that's kind of the thing, it's just that they're fighting cities, and then the citizens like, you know, why don't you have more police officers? Why don't you have more? Well, you know, we don't have the money, we don't have the sources. And then if we try to figure out a way to tap into some kind of other form of money to come into the city, then we're bad. The other thing I want to-
They're going to be looking for more forms of revenue too, because they're painting themselves in a corner, and that's why I brought up the 52 billion, recurring every biennium. They prohibited, they eliminate taxes, they eliminate fees, and they keep saying, well, where are you going to get the revenue from? Well, they think the oil and gas deal is going to last forever. Been there, done that.
You said their surplus was how much?
Sir?
The state surplus?
28 billion.
28 billion.
28 billion, holy cow. Because it used to be they had to have it like at 10 or 11, and now it's more than twice of what, if I remember right, there was a requirement that you couldn't have more than a certain amount.
Well, I remember when they had a $28 billion deficit.
Yeah, yeah. So a lot of that money should be, it's just they're overcharging us, so.
They are, which is why they're doing everything they can to increase the home state exemption.
Yeah. And then the other thing I wanted to ask real quick, I don't know, I know that there was at time bills for the election, you know, changing the election. I know municipalities, we do it in March, we just had it on Saturday, but there was talk there about, you know, having a change November. Somebody mentioned that they're going to try to do that. From my perspective, you know, I was kind of against that, but now, you know, I think it would be a good idea for us to have an election in November, but have you heard anything on that?
There's a number of bills going around, there always are. They never gained traction. I don't, everyone's, well, I say everyone, I think most Texans want more voter participation, because our, especially in these off elections, our numbers are abysmal. But I think there is some fear from one faction that November elections could spur up a little too much support on the other side of the aisle.
It depends on who's in charge.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, you like the Supreme Court, if they're going your way. If you don't, you want more people on there. You know, just, that's how we are. We're just, it's a human nature. But no, there's, yeah. No.
No, and lastly, I just want to say, you know, I appreciate what you do. I have a better understanding than the average person of lobbyists and what you do.
Yes, sir.
I served at the people that you mentioned, I was serving at the State Board for the Realtors are hated people here, but they had a powerful lobbyist, but one of their philosophies is one that should be carried by all. It's that if you're not at the table, you're where? On the table.
100%.
And they had that, and it's like, a lot of people don't understand that, if we have nobody there representing us, you know, it would look a lot worse than what it is right now.
And neighbor cities do eat neighbor cities.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you all for being here today. I also received the same postcard that Councilmember Segaro was talking about from Hillary Hicklin's camp. Oh, I didn't mean to say that. But there was another state legislature, who I will leave unnamed, sent me a message saying that that same person has a bill to make it harder for neighbors to stop housing from going up near them. I don't know if this is a bill in the making from the Hicklin group or not, but it would be interesting to-
You can look it up online. If it's there, it's online.
If it's true, I think that would be interesting bill to follow, because, you know, we see this here all the time, you know, constituents coming and talking about a rezoning of a case for a new development. So I don't think that her own constituents would be very happy, knowing that she's making a bill to make it harder for them to stop developments from going in. You know, right now, we have rules like, if we have so much opposition, it requires a supermajority from the council. So if she's looking to remove those stopgaps in favor of the developers, I think that would be very interesting for, you know, certain constituents to see, so.
Yes, sir.
Definitely, if y'all see anything about that. And I will go on and look it up tonight to see if there's anything in there yet, but I appreciate what y'all do, and thank you.
Thank you.
And just as an add on, my son was talking about the $50 million. It's more than a pipe dream, but it's not quite reality, the 50 million on the disabled vet thing. I think we've got a strong possibility of getting that. He understated it, and probably properly so, that the Chairwoman for Senate Finance does not like it at all. And I keep pointing out to him that that constitutional amendment passed, and it had no physical implication attached to it. Now, we should have been able to, the feeling is, we should have been able to figure that out. Well, I knew, I mean, if you give somebody a tax exemption, somebody else is going to pay the tax. You know what tax reduction means. If you exempt that person next to you- that person next to you, somebody next to him is going to pick it up or next to her. There's no such thing as property, in my judgment, as having shared ways and means and passed three tax bills. There's no such thing as tax relief. You're just shifting it to somebody else because government's going to continue to spend money at all levels. And that's not an evil thing. It's just the reality of government, and then it's what you spend the money on.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
My question. There was a discussion on restricting or limiting cities' membership in, like, Texas Municipal League and their role. I know there was a caveat bill to that allowing TML to provide representation from at a city level for a group of cities. You know where that is right now? And I know a number of cities that have registered...
I don't think it's gone anywhere because the bill prohibiting us from...
That's, that's the same one.
Is dying.
Yeah, okay. Then that's the...
Today. This is a report today. And for me personally, it makes no difference financially. I mean, I just, I present the fact that a group of people decides they don't like competition, and that's what it's about. Because this little group of people have had their hands, well, they've had their heads handed to them several times by the other people. And they don't like cities' ability to tax. They don't like cities' ability to zone. They don't like anything you do because they live in their own little world.
All right. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. This will be the last time I address you two in this capacity. And so I just want to thank you for your advocacy over the years. There's folks that would challenge whether or not we should continue funding what you do, but I find it is very important because we need people to advocate on our behalf.
I appreciate what you've done.
Absolutely. I'm a strong advocate, and I understand the effectiveness of effective advocating. I think you guys are doing that, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. And I just have a couple of questions. And one of this might be elementary and not related at all. Maybe you can just give a point of clarity for some folks. But there was a question that was asked. So we're tracking very closely. There's a lot of changes, of course, obviously legislatively in Texas House, but then also federally that could directly, in some cases indirectly, impact the City of Colleen and other municipalities. How does the impact of, let's just say, an executive order that could come down the pike that's giving our attorney generals and executive directors specific instruction, for example, 90 days, how does that impact the city's overall? Like, what does that look like for our constituencies here? Do you know what I'm referring to? So if an executive order comes down and it reads as such that the Attorney General and other appropriate heads of executive departments and agencies shall take appropriate action to maximize and use federal resources to blah, 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 how does that impact us with, we're going to be out of legislative session? How does that impact us on the local level?
You talk about a federal, like some of the president does.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't matter whether we're in session or not, because whatever he does, potentially everything, every executive order he does preempts whatever we do.
Correct.
And that's why so many lawsuits have been filed. The only way you can get an answer to whether or not it's constitutional or beyond his constitutional authority is file a lawsuit. And see, that, to me, is another problem because ordinary people cannot file lawsuits against constitutional issues. I mean, I can tell you, I've had friends that have gone to court, district federal court, you appeal, that's another $250,000. If you go to an appeals court beyond that, that's another million dollars. If you get to the Supreme Court, it's two or $3 million. Nobody can do that. So, you know, it takes a group of cities. That's why, that's why cities have to get together, and that's why you need help, is because you need to nip it in the bud, not wait for it to blossom.
Sure. And with that said, it was also proposed to me that if we did not have, let's just say, a lobbying firm or some assistants on the higher level and an upper level to assist municipalities as they're being stripped of different things, that basically it would be taking away our citizens' freedom of speech, so to speak, so us to be able to advocate for ourselves. So people who are proponents of freedom of speech should therefore be really concerned about this particular bill as it relates to defunding our lobbyists because they, in effect, are our voices at a higher level, which could protect us on this local level. Would you say that's a true statement?
Yes, ma'am. And like I said, if we weren't being successful, they wouldn't be trying to pass this bill. I mean, I told members of the legislature, I said, when I was in the legislature, I didn't fear any lobbyists. I didn't fear any lobby group. I mean, they could say, I'm going to beat you in an election. I said, fine, I'll pay, I'll pay the filing fee for the person that run against me. I mean, I told them that. But, I mean, you've got to, you've got to be willing to fight, and that's the deal, I mean.
And as decisions are being made, and let's just say they're nonpartisan issues, but these are issues that would directly impact our citizens here on the City of Colleen, regardless of what your affiliation is, I think it's extremely important that we do keep our eye on that in general. So with the flow of bills that might directly or indirectly affect us, will you all be at least providing, whether it's in person or a written update, when everything is said and done, so that we can wrap our heads around what will now impact us directly or indirectly?
We do that.
You will do that for us. Thank you.
We provide that every session to the city manager, and I assume he gives it to you all.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Seeing no further questions, we appreciate you all. Thank you for being here with us today and providing us such detailed...
Thank you very much.
Madam Secretary.
DS 25020, discuss the May 13th, 2025 special meetings to canvass the general and special elections and consider three ordinances approving the canvass results. And I'll make this very quick. This is my item, but it's just kind of an FYI of what's going to happen next Tuesday on the 13th. We will have a canvassing meeting starting at 4:00 PM. Only two members of council are needed to have that meeting, and Councilmembers Segarra and Adams have volunteered to handle the canvassing of the election results. Then we will have another special meeting at 5:00 PM to consider ordinances. I know I put three on the agenda, but I think after speaking with legal, we can get away with having probably two ordinances to canvass those results. And then at that other meeting at 5:00, we will also conduct the oath of office and issue certificates of election. You will read the standards of conduct, and an election of a mayor pro tem will take place. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Seeing none, thank you, ma'am. Madam Secretary?
Yes, ma'am. DS 25021, discuss media relations.
Councilmember Boyd.
Sorry.
25-021, discuss media relations.
What about it?
This is an item that was brought forward, it looks like by you. Your name is listed as frame of reference for discussion. Media relations.
Okay. Yeah. No, there's no intent to dog the media or anything like that. We have four television stations that cover our city as well as a local newspaper, and it's just important that we, that we remember that how we cover the city has an effect on our reputation and economic development, as well as our unity within the city. And so my charge is that we work to cover the city unbiased, fairly, and in a balanced way. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
The next item on the agenda is executive session, which is DS 25022, discuss state of Texas versus City of Colleen and Bell County versus City of Colleen regarding enforcement of low-level marijuana offenses.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to adjourn the meeting into closed session at 8:34 PM pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Law, VTC A Government Code 55.001. The Mayor Protem now calls a closed meeting of the City Council meeting on May 6, 2025, at 8:34 PM under the following authority, Section 55.071, consultation with attorney. The City Council will consult with legal counsel regarding pending litigation. All right. Council has completed its closed meeting on May 6, 2025, at 9:01 PM. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion.
Oh, what's the motion?
I make my last motion as a Councilmember to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Councilmember Boyd to adjourn, and a second by Councilmember Solomon. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. All in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Great. Thank you.